And happy St. Patty's Day and hugs to all those celebrating porum and having a festive porum today as well. As always, let's start off by saying a pledge and continue to share our thoughts. And I will share my prayers regarding the Ukraine and the strife happening there. There are up to three million displaced individuals that have fled that country at this point. So we've got to get somewhere with it, but until then, we can't boil the ocean. We can take care of our community. So let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and the invisible of liberty and justice for all.
It doesn't matter what the pundits say, the news says it all. And if you hadn't had the opportunity to listen to President Zelensky talk to Congress, it was probably one of the most powerful speeches given to Congress from a foreign leader. And yeah, I think that was yesterday morning around nine or so, but I'm sure it's available. Let's go with priority Carol and start with Commissioner Boucher.
Thank you very much. Good morning. I want to talk about the 29th this month, we're going to do our first walk in the park at Cape Horn Park up in Hampstead, Commissioner Weaver's district at 6:00 PM the evening. We're trying to initiate getting people out to the parks. Walk, the weather is changing. We want to be healthy. We've been cooped up inside. So on the 30th, we'll have partnership for Healthier Carroll County. Come before us with parking wrecks and talk about the program and doing a veiling. But the day before, we'll all kick it off with a walk at Cape Horn Park, 6:00 PM, March 29th. If you can, I look forward to you coming on out there. I don't know if Mr. Swam has anything for me? If you do, bring it up and see what we have. I did a tour of both Winters Mill High School, and this is the principal, law staff, Ms. McCabe, Mr. Streeker, and two counselors. When we had our joint board meeting with the Board of ADI, I asked about the mental health resources that the school has for our students. They so graciously gave me a chance to do a tour. I met with the counselors and I'm learning a lot about the resources they have and the resources that are available. And then last night, I went out to the same school for, here's the Robert Mooton School, met with the principal and our counselors out there, and there's a piece of artwork. Lots of wonderful people. They have a lot of challenges to face with the children post-COVID, and we're looking forward to giving them all the resources and support they need. And last night, I went out to Winters Mill for navigating difficult waters. They had a lot of exhibitors, Access Carroll, Boys and Girl Club, Family Support, Mediation, and they showed all the resources that are available for students and parents to tap into. And I sat in on one of them. It was match in time. It was sponsored through the Student Government Association. They did a wonderful presentation. A lot of students were active putting these programs together. I want a big applause to all the children out there who helped participate. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Weaver.
First of all, Cape Horn is on the line. It's District One, the line runs right up to Cape Horn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I corrected myself.
That is Commissioner Wance's district.
It's 1.5, District 1.5.
It should be District Two, but anyway.
Exactly.
It will be. Aside from that, the Veterans Council met Tuesday, and they had a very interesting meeting, very good meeting. First time they've met back live in a while, and they are really up and running again. I guess one of the biggest things is our Veterans Celebration coming May 15th. That committee has met weekly since, for a month here, and they have this put together so well with the Foreign Museum, helping the, do all the arrangements as far as people coming in, vendors and things. There's some interesting displays being put together. So I'm really happy with that committee and where they are. This is becoming a huge undertaking, and I don't know, people are getting the word out like crazy right at the present time. So this is going to be, I think, one of our bigger events here in Carroll County. And it follows along with Carroll County becoming just unbelievable with the model for what they do for veterans in the county, whether it's homeless veterans, whether it's veterans in need, whether it's veterans just with families, just want to be able to meet each other. And service organizations are phenomenal in Carroll County. So kudos to that group.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wance.
So good morning. Daylight savings time, and they're talking about maybe making it permanent now, which apparently that's getting through Congress in a bipartisan fashion, which is, anyway, we'll see what happens with that. It's been a few busy days for me. Met with Carroll Community College yesterday at their board meeting. A lot of interesting information came out of that. I will say that it started out with a student presentation by Alex David Zartha, who, I'm not even sure what the presentation was on, but it was protons and neutrons in a separator or diffuser, if you will, being blasted together, and they're studying the effects of what that does, and there's a huge device being built in New York. Anyway, the bottom line with this student was, you talk about impressive. I mean, this guy is just unbelievable. So he's, he gave a presentation and had everybody just wowed with that. He's going to go on to, well, he's got a whole bunch of choices. He's been accepted at like three different universities already. So just an impressive individual at Carroll Community College. And as Dr. Ball said last night after he was done, we can all now say that we knew you when.
You remember your inorganic chemistry now?
Yeah, so anyway. Moving on. Nice to see y'all. Anyway, so anyway, it's just impressive as to what a lot of these students that are coming out of these, the community colleges are capable of, and just, you know, wanted to share that. It was very impressive. So always enjoy going to the college. Enrollment at, at community colleges around the state down, and we'll be hearing more about that when we get into our budget presentations. And it's, it's interesting where this country is headed at this point when it comes to, to colleges. And then that was kind of highlighted yesterday when the governor decided that degrees aren't necessary for some employment opportunities in the state. So it's just very interesting how all that is, is right now at the, at the top of the list of things that we're focusing on. So more to come on that, but it's always a pleasure to be at the college. Also, met deep into the night with the Emergency Services Advisory Council. A lot of information coming out of there, and as we continue the transition or building towards the transition, if you will, a lot of challenges, and we'll share more of that as we, as we go along as well. Let me just touch on COVID real quick. I know everybody's sick and tired of hearing about it. As you can tell this morning, I can now do, go like this and touch.
Or slap.
Both of my colleagues, our Plexiglas is gone. I just want folks to be mindful. There's, we're talking about this in a lot of places, and it's not over yet, so we still need to be very mindful. But I want to say that we need to continue to tell folks that I think vaccinations are the way that we're going to get out of this. And apparently, there's another strain that they're looking at, and I don't even want to get into that. So just be mindful. Also, be respective of those. I heard an incident the other day of someone that was shamed as a result of the fact that they had a mask on. I don't even know where to go with that. It's just ridiculous, but it's, it's, I guess, where this country is these days. Doesn't seem to be any filters. The masks don't even seem to filter anybody. So anybody, anyway, just be mindful of that and be respectful as we, as we go through that. And to you, Ed, with, when you brought up for our moment of silence today, I don't even know where to go with that either. I know we like to concentrate on the local level, and for us to sit here and banter about what's going on at the national level is beyond what we should be doing. But the pictures and, and the news that you see coming out of there, I don't get it. I just don't get it. And maybe that goes to what I just said. Why do we all have to be fighting one another these days? Can't we all just get along? But it's sad. And I had my granddaughter in my arms last night, who's just turned one, and seeing some of those pictures come out of there, I don't, I just, I don't, I don't get it. So anyway, that's all that I have. Stay safe out there. It's supposed to be a pretty nice weekend. Looks like the temperatures are going to be cooperative now, and that's a good thing. So as more folks go outside and, you know, we move things out there, just be mindful and be safe as you move throughout your outdoor activities.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Weaver.
I don't know if you follow that, but I'll try. I'll try.
So back to you, Ed.
Had a TAC meeting this, this week, and they're getting things back up. They're opening the routes up, they're having more ridership, but they really need drivers. They really need drivers. They're having trouble hiring, just like everyone else is. A CBL is not required. They will take you to a, to a training course because this bus is a little bit bigger than your car, so it'd be nice to know how to drive and so forth. But, you know, there's no additional besides that training required to do this. People that are looking for a second career, do other jobs, they need drivers. When they get drivers, they can open up more routes back up again. What's holding them up is, you know, have the personnel right now. And that's, I know that's the same everywhere, but it's just the way it is. Also, was at the Westminster City Council meeting, whatever night that was this week, I'd like to say that they're concentrating on H, Highway User Revenues as well as Mako and everybody else. They'd like to see some of that money get back. They had people, a couple of people went down to testify when you were down there, Commissioner Wance. So it's a joint effort between Mako and MML to try to get Highway User Revenues back up to where they were because they're needed. They're, they're needed. Now, with this tax, gas tax thing that the people down in Annapolis are trying to put a stop on for 30 to 90 days, you know, that's going to take about almost $100 million out of that. But I have to say, the state has money in the rainy day fund to plug that money back in. They have billions, they really do. So they could do this and not, not miss a beat, but it's up to them how, how they do it. Also have to say that we don't have petitions up any longer. I have to say, I like it. I have, I can't, I just, I miss the way it was. I was, didn't realize how nice it was without them. But also to say, I voted against having the petitions taken down. But you notice, I didn't go to Facebook and complain about my vote being overrun and all this other stuff, and you guys trampling over me. It happens. We're a board, let's work together. I'll, you know, I have to say, I do like, I'm not touching Wance or anything, but I do like that the petitions are.
He might not want to.
That the petitions are down.
Need a hug, Commissioner Weaver?
That's okay. That's okay. So I just, you know, just, it's all worked together for this. And COVID's not over. At the TAC meeting, we have a representative from the Health Department was there, and she said that the number of people getting vaccinated and the people being tested is really, really down. So I said, well, what are the numbers? She said around 10 a day for each. So that's really, really going down a lot. And it's going down because COVID is kind of leaving. Hopefully, the new strain doesn't kick it back up and so forth. We don't know what will happen, but things are heading in the right direction. Let's keep moving that way. That's all I have.
I appreciate it, and I think you're getting a promotion from most of us that vaccines work. And, you know, doing the right things to minimize the impact of COVID in our community works. And we owe it to ourselves, our families, our neighbors, and our community to continue to, to do what is right. And so I appreciate hearing that. Also, you know, I heard about the boards and commissions and those that participated. I'd say, and I'm looking at the entire community, we cannot do it without you. We cannot reach the insight and candidness, thoughtfulness, ideas that you, the Carroll Countyans provide to allow us to make decisions. So I applaud all of you that are on these boards and commissions. If you want to participate more, please let us know. I really applaud my colleagues and their participation because it is so valuable to bring that back, that information. Thanks, Chris. There is online resources to reach out. There's also opportunities to reach any one of us directly, and we will provide our insight for these boards. But we have a diverse community, and the only way we can do it well enough is with you at, at the helm and leading together with us. So that's my plea for that. Mentioned May 15th, I appreciate that, Commissioner Weaver, and all the leadership you're providing in getting us to May 15th with the Veterans Events. We mentioned Ukraine. I think, Chris, do you have any pictures you want to share? It was a very active week. If you do, not sure if you do or not. Nope, there you go. So Team Ted.
The winners.
Battle of the Books, you know, has been ongoing event here in Carroll County. Well, there was an event this past week, which was an adult Battle of Books held at 1623 down in Eldersburg. One, if you haven't been to 1623, it's an awesome place, you know, and I think it's some of the best beer you're going to get, and craft beer and some real novel beers. So I had to partake, just let you know. That is the team winners with Team Ted in the, with Ted in the middle. And Robert and I had the pleasure of, you know, sharing a photo with them. So really, congratulations to all those. That was, that was pretty funny. I think he was worried I was going to be kissing him on the cheeks, which I did not do, so.
You look happier than he does.
It was, it was a lot of fun. So, yeah.
That is a stacked team.
It was. Trust me, it was a stacked team, but it went to sudden death. They, they had to participate in a, in a question, you know, playoff. So, okay, what else you got, Chris? And Commissioner Boucher was also in attendance. And then yesterday afternoon, one of the luxuries we have, I believe, as our colleagues is recognizing our Eagle Scouts and our Girl Scouts that have done some just amazing things. This young lady, her name's Leigh Anne, next year she'll be going to University of Alabama, Roll Tide, and she, for her project, created a all-weather pantry that is located behind the public library in Eldersburg. And she partnered with a local church, the Church on White Rock. It is a pantry that will be continuously filled, and anyone at any time can go get the needs they, you know, the food or staples that they need out of that pantry. Because a lot of these pantries and food programs have hours to them. This is a 24/7 operation. What's also really cool about this is it's anonymous. She did not want her name on this. She wanted, she's, the sign to the left is recognizing those that have donated some of the hardware, but it is, you know, an anonymous project. And I'll tell you, sometimes you want to do something, sometimes you need to. I really felt like I needed this yesterday, and congratulating her. And I said to her that she came up with a complex problem of how do we deal with hunger, and came up with a relatively simple solution, and that is making it a 24/7 box. I'd like to talk to the libraries and the senior centers, and this is a very low cost opportunity to maybe have these in other locations around the county. Because that's one of the problems we have, is the, the hours of these services are limited this way.
There are a lot of them scattered throughout the county now that are open 24/7.
Are there?
Churches, different.
This is just great, and what a powerful young lady she is. So again, congratulations, Leigh Anne. And that's all I have. I love leaving it on a high note, and even with a higher note, let's get Mr. Fowler up here with his bright orange tie. So I think he just wants to get pinched or something, but, you know.
Orange is green for you?
I worked for, many years ago, for a fellow named Bill McCarty. And everything, St. Patrick's Day, he wore an orange sweater just to be honorary, so. That's why I'm honoring Mr. McCarty. So we got two weeks to cross over. There's a lot of voting going on right now, very active redistricting. You probably know the primary's been moved to July 19th. And I don't, I'm not certain of this, but I think the filing deadline's been moved as well, April 22nd.
April, I think 15th.
15th.
I see.
Tax Day?
Just a question.
It's actually not Tax Day, just in case anybody picks that up. It's, it's the 18th. There's a, I forget why the 15th, there's some holiday that's the 15th, but I forget what it is. And, and so it's 18th in all states except for Massachusetts and Maine, and it's the 19th because they celebrate Patriots' Day on the 18th.
You did your homework. Thanks for the clarification. Highway user revenue. So I used to think that Ted Zaleski was overly cynical about the General Assembly. I think he's actually the Oracle of Delphi. So we had this massive landing in Annapolis by all the counties and municipalities and talking about how important this was. So the House voted through a leadership amendment on this bill and cut it down very, very significantly. So what it means to Carroll is, under the current status, you'd end up with 2.7 million annually. This gives you another half, half a million. Would have been up to 13.4 if you got full restoration. So the Senate version was intended to be voted on Thursday, Tuesday night. Senator McCray is the Senate sponsor. He was not there for whatever reason, and so they didn't vote on the bill. But it was clear from their discussion when they talked about, it's almost like the counties feel entitled to this money. And.
Didn't, didn't we pay the bill?
It was, it was kind of shocking, actually. So, so they didn't really talk much about the bill, other than, you know, they need to do something and they will do something. And that was the biggest commitment that, you know, I could hear.
Do they still have the sunset on the, on the bills?
Yes.
Did they move, did they move it?
The dates are moved down, but, yeah, but it's still sunset. So you're going to be facing that issue again. I think the municipalities might have made out better, actually, in this, in this new, new bill. So, and I mentioned to you, there's, Senator Washington from Baltimore City also put in Highway User Revenue Bill, and her numbers were, I think they were kind of picked out of the air. I think she did a lot of deep dive on the numbers. So that was part of the discussion in the hearing too. So all he, all the chairman would say is, you know, they're going to do something. But, you know, they have to continue, look at the out years. That was the talk, the out years, the out years. So.
Are you insinuating, I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's called kicking the can.
Are you insinuating the Senate couldn't save us, or Conference Committee get the numbers up, or it looks?
Well, it's, yeah, it's possible, but it's not going to be anywhere near full restoration. And that's, that's pretty clear.
We got a little bit of hope it could go up.
It, it could.
But not be what we had potentially expected.
Yeah, and the so-called leadership amendments, are they just House leadership? Does it include the Senate? After I heard the Senate Committee talk, I'm not so sure they're necessarily in agreement, so we got to keep our eyes on this. It's hard to know where it's going to end up. But wherever it is, it's not going to be anywhere near what we hoped for, what we anticipated.
So Mr. Zaleski was right.
The Oracle of Delphi, yes, right again.
Keep in mind, the counties as a whole across the state operate and maintain more miles of road than the state.
Yes, they do.
And that was one of my points when I testified, because Carroll has actually taken over some of the state roads here in Carroll. And I, well, I'm just.
Senator Young made the same argument in that Senate discussion, that they've done the same thing in City of Frederick, 355 and Route 40. They took over, and, you know, it was never set in stone, but the expectation was always there that the money would continue.
Yeah, and Old Liberty, Middleburg, used to be a state. We took that over.
Sykesville, Old Street, Sykesville.
Old Washington.
That's still a state, but the intent is to transition it to the town, 851. Yeah, no, absolutely agree.
Yeah, I tried to hit it from a little bit different perspective with that because the numbers can, can get overwhelming, and I get that. But my complete disappointment is the fact that I have never, ever, in the seven and a half years that I've been down there, seen a more bipartisan experience where everyone came together and there was no begging, there was, there was, you know, clearly this was taken away. Even Johnny O said, his, his was very interesting, and he said, look, I was a legislator when, when the, the funds were taken away. Was it right at the time? Eh, but I'm here to tell you now that it's, it's, it needs to come back to us. So there were things like that that, that came out in, in all that testified, and it goes, well, you've heard me say it before, it's just very disappointing because when you talk about Highway User Revenue, where the rubber hits the road, or whatever you want to call it, they're completely missing that in the General Assembly. And this is a classic example of the disconnect between the locals and the General Assembly. And it's, it's sad, and I don't know what is going to change that ever. It's been that way. But this one especially was very disappointing.
Well, you talk about the bipartisan line, and everyone from the other side of the aisle that was on that bill for full restoration voted for the amended bill. So they vote as a block. Whatever the issue is, they vote as a block. They never peel off without permission.
They are very disciplined in their ranks.
Extremely disciplined.
Is there, is there a distribution formula set up for basically like linear miles of roads per jurisdiction? Or is it arbitrary? I mean, what type of formula do they have to ensure justice that we're all getting the right amounts?
Yeah, I, I don't, I honestly don't know how that calculation is made. It's paid for all 24.
It'd be nice if there was some sort of formula justifiable on how many linear miles of roads we had.
Yeah, I don't know what it's based on.
Politics.
I mean, Baltimore City has a, a unique situation, and they, they handle all of the state roads in the city.
Right.
And they're, they're hurting too. So.
Yep.
Anyway, that's, that's bad news.
Yep.
Bad news.
You're a wet blanket.
Totally. When you said highlights, I thought.
It's not unexpected.
No.
I mean, it's not unexpected, it's just not good news.
We, we just thought because of the efforts, that was so unique.
I mean, not even halfway.
This one would be, that this would be different. Like clearly even this won't change how things operate.
Yeah, and Mako thought, maybe they could push compromise, maybe get two-thirds back.
I mean, was Montgomery County down there with you?
Not even half.
No. They weren't testifying with you.
I didn't see anybody from Montgomery, did you?
No, I don't think so.
Of course not. And this is, you know.
Prince George's was there, but not Montgomery.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
Anyway, okay.
So, yeah, the bill, the election bill actually had its title changed because it was amended so heavily. There were a lot of other things in there besides the 50/50 funding split. So that's the only thing that remained in the bill, so they changed the, the title. The House version, before it got voted on, it was a floor amendment to strike that. The House version, before it got voted on, it was a floor amendment to strike that limitation on moving the, the primary two weeks out, because the court had already done it, so it was a moot point. So, so that's, that's gonna go through. That's, that's good news. That's good news. No movement on the ambulance reimbursement. I have activity on family and medical leave. So the Senate voted through their version. They amended the 50-50 employer-employee split into this insurance fund. I had heard 80-20. I, I read now it's 75-25, so it's somewhere in that area where the employee has to actually contribute more. But on the House side, the sponsor of the bill is the chair, the committee chair. And he amended his bill to be a commission to study over the interim, because so many of the, because the, the economic environment has changed so significantly since the last task force looked at this in 2017. He, he made sure to say that it's not a stall tactic or trying to kick the can. It's really to get a, a handle on where we are economically, and that the funds are where they should be. And that the, you know, the splits are where they should be. So not sure who's gonna win out in that argument, but I'm gonna put my money on him. And maybe I should ask Ted, who thinks is gonna win that. And so I, I gave you a, a pretty lengthy summary of the climate bill, because I want you to have that background. I highlighted the things that are impactful to the county. And again, this is the Senate version. The House has their bills in, in, there are multiple bills that basically comprise what this Senate bill tries to do. Which is interesting, because they were almost across the finish line last session, and they just ran out of time. So my thought was, they'd be getting together during the interim and come in united, but that's not the way they did it. So I think there are maybe three or four bills that have aspects of what's here in them. So now it's through the Senate, it's over in the House, and I think that's where the work begins now, on the House. But, so the landfills, I, I mentioned the landfill to you before, because they had some concerns. I, I think that most of their concerns have been kind of mitigated to some extent. There was a, a initial proposal in the bill to institute the California methane emission standards for landfills, which were very strict and would have been very costly. That's been stricken out of the bill, but MDE is gonna write the emissions standards. So that remains to be seen, what they do. One of the concerns was if they were more strict, or stricter, that there would be a cost associated with that. So what the bill does is say, if the difference in, uh, in getting the air emissions and the ground emissions data in sync, if that's, if the cost of doing that based on the new standards is more expensive, then the state will reimburse 50% of that differential. So if it costs 50,000 to meet the standard, um, under, under existing standards, and MDE, under MDE standards, it costs 100,000, then they would, they would give you 50% of that $50,000 difference.
Do they have any way to achieve climate equity?
Climate equity isn't even, it's, it's not even defined. So this, this bill is full of environmental justice, climate justice, climate equity, environmental equity.
In the end, it's all cost us more money to our landfill, most likely too. That's, that's what concerns me, is we're in the midst of this project, and this is hanging over our head, and we don't know how to hit our bottom line to implement the expansion of our landfill.
Yeah, it, it, it is said that, that the, the emissions from landfill are greater than the data suggest they are. Underestimated is the way it's described. So they'll take air measurements, they'll compare the ground measurements. If they're more than 25% out of sync, they gotta study it, find a way to either explain it, get them in sync, you know, take action to, to get them.
Then ultimately, whatever comes out of this, your air staff will inform us in a briefing or something, let us know how it impacts us. Especially in the cost of implementing the expansion.
They're watching it closely. Yeah, and, and I think that the, this cost differential reimbursement is, is something that, that Cliff Engel was pushing to, to get Mago to, to get an amendment and all that. So I, I don't know if it was all that he wanted, but at least it got addressed to some degree. Also, zero emissions school buses. So beginning in fiscal year '25, a Board of Education can't contract for purchase a bus that's not a zero emissions bus. So what does that mean? It's an electric bus, right? Also, they can't, a bus can't be used if it has an in-service date of, after 2024, or after the first of the year 2024. So you can use buses that are currently in the fleet, right? But if they, if a diesel bus goes into service, it can't go into service after that date. So you can't put a new bus, a new diesel bus into the fleet after that time.
Which will drive up our costs.
So the cost of new buses, and I guess you'll run the diesel buses until the wheels fall off. There, there are some, as you see, there are some exemptions, you know. Think of the Eastern Shore, the range is pretty wide, pretty, you know, a lot of miles traveled by a bus. So if it can't make that in a single charge, then there's gonna be some, some cover given to that. And then if, if the, if the differential cost, if the board can't get additional funding to cover that difference, they may not have to do it. So there, at least there's a little bit of relief there. A, a lot around energy performance standards for buildings, for commercial and multifamily buildings. So the, the building industry was very vocal about being able to meet the original standards that were within the bill, which is total electrification. I mean, that is really still the intent here, is to get, get our society, or get, in Maryland, is to get Maryland off of fossil fuels. So that's the transportation sector, that's the building sector, right? Do away with natural gas, with propane, with oil for heating. That's really the intent. But, and that's where the bill started out, was phasing out all of those fossil fuels. Well, that's still the intent, actually. But the stated intent of the bill is to get to net zero, which, you know, there are offsets associated with that.
We're following California, basically.
Essentially.
Imulating what California's doing.
Essentially, yes, yes. So, you know, buildings have to, have to be lead silver. There's, there's one in there, a little further down, you'll see, about schools. So if you build a school, any school you build, or schools, plural, you build, between July of next year and July of 2033, at least one of them has to be a net zero building. And that can be waived if there are site constraints, right? You can't, you can't build it if the site doesn't allow you to do that. Or if, if you can't cover the cost difference between building a high-performance school and building a net zero school, then this net zero grant fund that's being established may be able to assist in making up that difference, help you make up.
So they know going into this, that's all, costs more for us to do these buildings.
Well, on the other hand, it's possible that the operating costs will be less down the road. So at the end of the life of the building, it may be less expensive.
I'd be interested to see the charge, how to justify that.
Right, it's still capital versus operating, right? You still have to look at it that way. And then property tax, I, I talked about a bill that would exempt property tax for community solar on rooftops, or brownfields, or parking lot canopies. Well, that's, that's part of this. So it is limited, though. It's, uh, it's only those installations that, I think there's a year, I think. You can't take applications after the end of 2024. So it's about 18 months. If someone comes in, in that 18-month period, then they would be eligible to be exempt under those circumstances. And then the project would be exempt for the life of the project. And I think we said last time, we didn't have any community solar at this time, but we may?
We have the ability, but I don't know of any that's been completed. Yeah, but we have a community solar ordinance that allows you to do it.
And then, so there, there are some final recommendations, or directives, I guess, is probably more appropriate toward the, the end of the bill. So that's why I say when the, when the bill is really aiming, that's really what the bill is aiming, is to, is to go to an all-electric building code to, to get the state more involved in the utility planning, so that the utilities can, can build out the grid in order to meet this increased demand. And that it's really to, to essence, in essence, get rid of natural gas as a fuel. And when you do that, you have stranded assets, because you've all, got all that equipment and pipes in the ground. That is, it's an asset, it's gotta be written off. If you'll remember, back in 2000, when we did electric restructuring, you had power plants that were stranded assets, and the customers paid for those, because a utility is cost-based, and customers are basically paying the cost. And so we'll have to see how that goes. But anyway, a very, very societal-changing policy, and a lot to be digested.
I do find it quite ironic that the generation of electricity is created by the burning of fossil fuels. So having electricity does not necessarily reduce the consumption of fossil fuels, it actually increases it.
I won't say anything, but you need to do a little bit more research, so I can, all I have to say.
I work for the utility industry.
Okay, what else?
That's all I have for you today. Oh, the priority letter, yes. So there was a suggestion that the City of Westminster would add, be able to add their Westminster Trail project on.
Yeah, please, Mary, come on up. Thanks. So when he can't answer the things you're there.
Got it. He's the new Linda.
I'm looking, I'm gonna look immediately to my.
That's a good answer.
So there, there, there are two issues with the letter. That's, that's one.
But that's an easy fix.
Yeah, so, so let's, let's focus on that one.
Okay, let's do that one first.
So, um, an added trail in Westminster wants to be put onto the priority list.
Right.
The Wakefield Trail.
And put it last. We already have two trails, I believe, on there already?
Correct.
That would, this would be the third.
Yes.
And they're, they're, I understand it's going, if, if we put it on, it's gonna be last on, on the thing. They just want it on there, because if it's on there, then they're eligible to get some earmarks for some aid somehow or another. So that's why they would like it seated on there.
Okay. Is there any issue on this?
No, it's not too late for either of you to add that, Mary.
No, and I sent the language up. You should, I think, do they have it in front of them?
No. That, that's okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you could talk this through, but that's fine.
It's no problem to put it in now. It hasn't been sent to the secretary yet.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
Yep. So you're making a motion to do that, or?
Dennis is.
Okay.
Make a motion that we add the Wakefield Valley Trail to our, um, what's the name of the letter?
The CTP priority letter?
I knew how to see in your CTP letter.
I will second that.
Okay, I got a motion second. Any discussion, I think, I appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, the second.
Part two.
Part two.
The priorities were switched in the letter. So Route 97 now has become the top priority. And I hope Mary's here to correct me if I'm inaccurate in how I describe it. But because the, the changes that came out of the Red Line cancellation means that there's a scoring process now. And so in order to get that project scored, there has to be a feasibility study conducted. So the, the reason for moving 97 up was to get the funds for the feasibility study, so the Chapter 30 scoring can be done, and continue to move the project forward. So several of our delegates have expressed concern about the change in that priority. And they don't understand why it was done. So I had a discussion this morning with Delegate Krebs, and let her know what the rationale was. She still had some outstanding questions. Do, does, uh, does S H A or MDOT know this? Do they understand why the priority's being changed? Those kinds of questions. So what I committed to was to ask Linda and, and Mary to put together a letter that lays out the rationale for this, and get that in their hands. And if they have additional questions, or they still want to talk it through, we can schedule a Zoom call with them, and, and can do the talk. But as it stands now, they don't want to sign the, the letter, without understanding why that priority was changed.
Okay.
So I'm here to ask why we even need them to sign the letter.
Well, it's state funds, and typically, as I understand it, it carries more weight if you have the delegation behind the request.
I doubt very seriously if the state pays attention to that. I know for a fact that we're only one of about three jurisdictions that even takes that step. The, the amount of work that our staff puts into this, the amount of knowledge that our staff has when it comes to putting this letter together, is unequaled. And I think it's a tad bit of a slap in the face to have our legislators, who don't understand what the work content is, or what the meaning of it is, to even question it. So I'm here to entertain that we just stopped that. We discussed this about five years ago. It came really close to not having them do that any longer. But I don't know what the purpose of it is any longer. Again, clearly, I believe, our staff knows the county very well. Our staff works with this, with these projects, day in and day out, and knows exactly where they should be on this list. It's not a matter of who gets what first, and I believe that's the mindset of a couple of the delegates, that, well, wait a minute. It's, you know, does that mean that this, that this is gonna happen before that one? If you clearly under, if you clearly explain to them what the answer was, and there's still questions, I have a challenge with that. Because clearly that identifies exactly why we did that, because it needs to get the scoring. It's years and years away, if ever, happening. But if it doesn't have the scoring, it's never gonna happen. So I, I'm, I'm challenged with this, and I think, I think it's disrespectful to our staff.
Think we should move the letter on without their signatures? I don't think it's necessary.
Well, yeah, please, I'm sorry. I apologize. No, I, um, I understand, and I understand the concerns. I don't agree. I think the more advocacy we can achieve in using state, you know, going after state funds is a good thing. We do a good job in communicating to our legislators, maybe not holistically, because our representation covers three different districts, and we don't seem to cover that holistically. You know, all the time, and we do our best, and I really appreciate the staff and the work they do. I think, um, the question was brought up, although it could be thought of as hostile the way it was brought up. I think the intent is not to micromanage. I think the intent is not to micromanage, but to best understand and, and get the funds that we want to get, you know, through this letter. I don't believe they understood the, uh, the priorities and why we put the priorities in place the way. Cause, cause honestly, I didn't understand that as best, and I could not share that as best as I think I should have been able to do. And, um, but, uh, I, you know, anytime I can get advocacy, I wanna get advocacy. Anytime I can get support, I wanna get support, especially when I'm using somebody else's money.
That's fine, but those, those highway user revenues and, and all of that, as you can tell, the, the delegation has no intent, the, the General Assembly has little intent to get that back to us. So I get what you're saying, but yet you're sort of talking in circles for me, uh, because we're not gonna get there anyway. So, uh, if you answered the question, and now there's more questions, that's where I'm getting hung up.
Do you think there's more?
Yes, there was a question. We answered it. It's, it's a clear answer. I understood it. I, I've always understood why it's on there. It's not about what project gets done first. It's about the priorities of getting the funding to begin the projects and getting, getting them into the different phases of, of becoming reality. And clearly, that ninety-seven project is, is, I mean, come out there with me this evening, and I'll show you why, but the study has got to be done. There's two lanes with hundreds of cars. So we've gotta start that stud, get that study started. So that's why we did it. So it's a clear answer. So I'm, I'm just confused as to why the clear answer now has more questions.
This is our letter. We discussed what order to put these things in, and we had, we had a discussion in open session about which ones would go first. This is our letter. Our state delegation, I believe their job is to help us along, not to question everything we do. I, I, I don't, but I remember, actually, I wanted to bring that up. Who runs the county? We're county commissioners. We're elected to run the county. This is our letter. This is what we put out there. I think it should go through. They asked, it was answered. They obviously didn't like the answer. This is still our le, still our letter. They don't wanna sign it. I'm okay with sending the letter without them signing it. I'm fine with that. Like Commissioner O'Wan said, most jurisdictions don't even have your state delegation sign it. And, and my time on as a board, uh, on as Board of Commissioners, I can't see what help their signing letter actually has done for us, to be honest with you.
We do need to explain, maybe I simultaneously send the letter saying, explain where we are and push it through. I, I agree with you. Why are we getting so much pushback from the delegation this year? Not really, everything we do is being questioned. And before it all went through, now it seems, this year seemed like we're getting all kind of, uh, pushback. But, uh, you know, this is what's needed in the county at this time. I, no, no doubt about it. Ask them for the support, explain it to them. If not, we send it on through.
Right. This is a perfect example of, pardon the pun, stay in your lane.
What even fits? If I may, I love the debate over this, and I think my colleagues have lots of really good points. But overall, what it comes down to is we are a commissioner of former government, and I have to agree with Commissioner Ralston that we need to obtain as much advocacy as possible through our delegation to help us. So as long as we're a commissioner of former government, we need to partner up and get the help of our delegation, even though we might have some disagreements. The more unified we are, I think the better off we are. Because if we're not, it makes us a bit dysfunctional to the state government.
Give me an example of what you're talking about.
Tell us what the help is.
I don't, and I don't agree with that. I mean.
I know, I got a question. What's the help that you're talking about?
We want our advocates in Annapolis that represent us to fight for the resources from the state government. And I think one of the reasons we need that is because we are a commissioner of former government. We are not fully independent. We do depend on our delegation.
So have you paid attention to what we just talked about with highway user revenue?
Uh, I know, they, they take it away from us. But the point is, I'm getting at, we're talking about the state delegation. As long as we are a commissioner of former government, they are our representatives down there, and they have more way over us than a county government that has its own charter or constitution.
So, so, so to sum your, to sum your comments up, it's not about the hard work that our staff puts in. It's about politics.
That's not what I'm saying at all. I, I just think that if our state delegation wants more clarification, then we should acquiesce to them.
We did that.
All right. We'll, we'll do everything we can. I just wanna make sure that we look unified going into this.
Well, let, first off, this has nothing to me, in my opinion, that we're a commission form of government whatsoever. That, zero. This has to do with state funds and resources. And if, you know, I was a county executive in another jurisdiction, I would be talking to my legislation if I'm looking for state funds and making sure they understood what my intent is and what the requirements are. It has zero to do with the commission form of government. I think that the more advocacy we get from our legislators, and we are doing that, and I, I agree. I think the, the, the step is to just put into this letter, this is why it is priority one, not that it's just priority one. And we put it up front, and then that's it, and we sign it, and we push it off. And I'm, I'm for that. I'm not going to go beyond that. I'm not gonna say I'm changing my priorities because we have a strong rationale that our staff does. So I, I agree with you. But I just, I think there's validity in putting, this is the why we're doing what we're doing. And we all sign it, and we request for them to support it. And then that's it.
Uh, I still stick with the fact that I think it's a complete lack of, of disrespect to our staff. Because they, they put hours and hours and hours into this, into this CTP letter every year. They upgrade it every year, update it to make sure the latest facts are in there, only to be questioned by a group who has no idea why they're even in the priorities that they are. I just think it's disrespectful to our staff. That's my, I don't care about the politics of all of it. That is what it is. I care about the fact that our staff have spent a lot of hours into this. And, okay, a question was asked. Great. Here's your answer. Oh, well, I'm not good with that answer. Now I've got questions based on your answer. Where does it stop? I, I don't know where it stops. And what's the timeline for the priority letter?
Um, we need to submit it to the secretary by April first.
Okay.
We're doing what we think's best for the county here and the needs of people in Carroll County.
Based on our staff?
Based on our staff and what we know, but you've seen it. We all have seen the, uh, backlog and the traffic. We're doing what's best for the people of Carroll, asking for that from the state, so.
So we owe it to use all the tools available, which is the advocacy from our legislation. And in order to get that, if we need to put, I'm sorry, if we need to put in additional paragraph or clarification, then we should.
But they're not asking for it in the priority letter. They're asking for a separate letter.
Yeah, so we put a cover letter, say, this is the, this is why their priority is in order to do the study.
Yeah, the delegation is asking just for that, for them, not to go to the state.
That's fine.
It has no place in that letter. We shouldn't be explaining the transportation, the transportation letter to the transportation people. I mean, go on.
Yeah, but, okay.
So, so if you wanna give them more, I just don't want this to be held up because of somebody's, you know, uh, personal vendetta using politics. And the folks right here on the ground will be suffering as a result of that. That's, that's un, that, that just, I, I don't like that.
A study was done. Off our way through. Um, the letter is due by April first.
Right.
The letter has your signatures as it is.
Right.
I did make a commitment to, to ask Linda to provide them with additional details. If we do that, and they sign their portion, fine, everything's done. If they don't, you still have the letter that you signed.
Correct.
And you can still get it to the state by April first.
And I, I agree.
So I think if we take that, we don't lose anything. We, we can only.
I, I, I do have a question, um, Mary. Studies have been done for twenty-six?
And thirty-two.
And thirty-two.
Which is why they are already eligible to be included in the CTP, whether or not it's unfunded or not they're in.
Study.
But ninety-seven cannot be in until there's a study.
So, so in order for it to be in, and I know this is exactly what you're saying, I just wanna make sure I'm very clear, a study has to be done. That's why putting it to the highest priority will show our intent to get a study done.
Correct.
Okay. Very clear in my mind now. Cause I tell you, I just.
Do you have any additional questions?
I just wasn't as clear.
You don't, do you?
I'm telling you. I, but when I was explaining, I just wasn't as clear, and that's on me. Um, so.
I'm not faulting you, Ed. I get that. I mean, when I first did this six years ago, I had similar questions. Because I remember sitting here talking about, well, wait a minute, why should you get that road before I get the road in my district? And it was clearly explained that that's not how it works. So you don't have any additional questions after getting that answer, do you?
No, and I think they're going to be fine with that.
Case closed. Well, apparently they're not.
I already got that answer.
It will be. It will be.
My, my thought was that Linda will be able to answer and, and set aside any nuances in this. You know, I'm, I'm coming to this cold. So all I know is the discussion that Linda and Robert and I had on it. So that's exactly what I told her, that the Chapter thirty scoring requires the money. The way to get the money is to move it up in priority.
Right.
But, but again, maybe a, another, this, another reminder of what the priority list really means. Because ninety-seven's been on the priority list. It just hasn't been at the top, right? So if it's on the priority list, but it couldn't be dealt with because it couldn't meet the scoring requirement. So I think there's some additional background. It's gonna be helpful.
Right.
And I'm not sure that all the delegation that has reservations even understands the basics of the letter. Maybe over the years, it's been more of a check-the-box exercise.
I would think that's a very good assumption, and we wanna clarify it. To take away those assumptions, make them into facts, and understand what the priority letter is all about. So I absolutely agree with this, with this process. And at no means, cause I agree a hundred percent with you, that we have a lack of confidence in the work and due diligence from our staff in getting us to where we are. Um, taking the next step for this legislative advocacy or support, we do what you said, and regardless, it's to be submitted by no later than one April.
Clearly, you're not gonna change the priority.
No.
All right. That, the letter is signed, it's done. That's where it's gonna stay. So an explanation. The rest is up to them.
That, that's correct.
We may need a judge to rule on this.
Speaking of a judge, what else you got, Mike?
I think that's all I have.
Okay, let's, let's talk to the judge.
Enough of that. Thank you, Mr. Valer.
And thank you, Mary. Sir, why don't you come on up? I apologize for delay. Judge Hecker. Let's talk about, I think we have three actions for you, annual, uh, twenty-twenty-two courthouse security funding and acceptance of the award.
You, you don't want any highway user funds, do you?
Well, we'll take whatever you wanna give me. We'll, we'll find a use for that, I'm sure.
We, we, we have three actions, and then I'm gonna ask for an opinion at the end.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna only handle two of them, and I think Nathan Hoyle, who all of you know, and I think you know that he's now our, our family law administrator as a result of, uh, after Polly Wolliver's retirement, and Nathan had been the deputy family law administrator for a number of years. He's been promoted to family law administrator. So he's gonna handle the macro grant.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so good morning, and, uh, good to see everybody. Thanks for having me on your agenda today. So if I can start with the, uh, request that we have for approval of a grant from the Administrative Office of the Courts in the amount of twelve thousand dollars for, um, the installation of, uh, security window film, blast film for the windows and doors. We were offered an opportunity through the Security Office of the Administrative Office of the Courts to apply for a grant for this blast film. We applied for it, and they awarded us this grant, and, uh, it requires the approval of the county commissioners with, and with no cost to the county. But it does require the county's acceptance of this grant. So the plan is to install this blast film on all exterior, on all window, public-facing windows and doors to add an additional layer of security for the courthouse. So hope we never need it. Um, but since they were offering, we took the opportunity to apply for it, so.
This covers a hundred percent?
This covers a hundred percent of the cost of the material and installation.
I apologize, a hundred percent of the outward-facing windows?
Yeah, they're.
Okay.
Yeah, without getting into too much detail, there, there might be a few sort of small windows that are difficult to cover, but I think don't create a real security risk not having, uh, the blast film. But yeah, all the, the major windows and doors are covered, yes.
Okay.
I move the Board of Commissioners to approve the submission of A Y twenty-twenty-two courthouse security fund requesting a twelve thousand dollars and accept the award.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in a couple seconds. I know where this is gonna go. Any discussion? Seeing here none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now let's talk about fiscal year twenty-twenty-three discretionary grant application acceptance of award.
So good morning again. Uh, I'm requesting that the, uh, Board of Commissioners approve a grant from the Office of Problem-Solving Courts for the continued funding of our Carroll County Adult Drug Treatment Court, as, uh, you have done for us in the past. The total grant amount is three hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents, of which, uh, there is a county match of four thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars. I know that each of you is familiar with the Drug Treatment Court program that we run. We're, uh, approaching our five-hundredth, uh, participant entering the program here shortly. We have, um, graduated, as I've told you, I think, over the years. We graduate a little over fifty percent. So it's a tough program. It's not easy to make it through this program. But those who go on to graduate, uh, from our Drug Treatment Court is, uh, as I think I've indicated to you in the past also, have a lower recidivism rate. Obviously, it results in, uh, better community, cost savings to the community. And many of our graduates, I'm proud to tell you, are also working in our community in the recovery, um, arena, operating sober homes, uh, working in recovery homes, and so assisting those, uh, who are going through recovery themselves. So we currently have about forty participants in our program. We're built for larger than that. But because of the COVID restrictions that were placed on the courts for about two years, we didn't see as many people entering our Drug Treatment Court program because the criminal dockets, um, were very restricted in terms of what we could do. So, uh, we expect an increase, and we expect now that we have, um, resumed full operations as of March seventh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, we're gonna see, uh, a steady increase and continuation of individuals coming into the program.
This is probably one of the most satisfying things you do in your duties as a judge, isn't it?
I would have to say it is. It is. It is.
Good.
It's not, um, we, at times, uh, these court proceedings can become a bit adversarial, but they're not designed to be adversarial. They're designed to be rehabilitative and supportive. It's a court-supervised, uh, treatment program. It's what Drug Treatment Court really is about. And so, uh, we try to provide as much structure and support to individuals. It's a very different role for a judge, uh, presiding over Drug Treatment Court versus, uh, traditional criminal court proceeding.
So a very close second would be coming to the county commissioners periodically.
Okay, so once again, it's content and delivery. Okay, the content wasn't there, and the delivery makes your face turn red. So.
Should've done my.
No comments from the elves off to the left.
I do wanna mention while I'm here, and you'll get an invitation formally, if you haven't already, to our next graduation, which is April thirteenth.
Right.
At the Carroll Community College at four-thirty in the afternoon. Uh, we were thrilled to return there in the fall, this past fall, for our graduation. I know some of you were there, and we're looking, looking forward to our next graduation. Also, I wanted to point out, uh, we have a. Also, I wanted to point out, uh, we have a relatively new case manager who's with us today. You know, Deana Black, who is our drug treatment court coordinator, and Stephanie Jones has joined us as our full-time case manager. We also have a part-time case manager, Crystal Morey, and so Stephanie's doing a great job with us.
Awesome. Yeah, the, uh, graduation, uh, a few months back was awesome and look forward to the April, so.
I'll make the motion, if you, I didn't cut you off. Make the motion, the board of commissioners approve the submission of FY twenty-three office of problem solving courts discretionary grant application and accept the award.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I thank you very much.
If you can just, uh, and if you can just take, uh, a second. I, uh, came to you a few years back, um, talking about veterans. Uh, as I shared, a, um, a colleague of mine, uh, retired Colonel Echai, um, runs a veterans' court advocacy program down in Tampa, Florida. I don't know if you remember that conversation we had. And, um, his name's DJ and he and I spent a lot of time in the dirt, lots of places. So I really applaud the work he's doing and it's kinda like this, you know, we, we go back and forth about the different programs. Recently at the Veterans Advisory Council, which I'm again incredibly proud of, of the veterans and community outreach to highlight that nobody does it better in Carroll County is when it comes to taking care of our veterans, from shuttle service to all the other programs. It was brought up, uh, in open discussion about a veterans' court and, uh, whether a veterans' court is necessary and the advocacy of it. And the, the discussion was, well, they don't want anything from the county or from the veterans, they being those discussing in open session, or from the veterans advisory except for really advocacy. I was in very much a listen, learn mode, uh, along with Commissioner Weaver. I'd like to know, I mean, is this something that we should continue to pursue? Or is it still in the same realm that you and I had the conversation a few years back? And I know I'm putting you on the spot about this.
That's okay. No, I mean, look, it, um, this topic is, um, resurfaced, uh, this year. I'm sure that you've seen some.
Articles.
Public, right, yeah, discussion about this in newspapers and so forth. I've been approached, uh, by individuals about creating a veterans' treatment court. And, and my response was that I still don't believe that we have enough veterans in our criminal justice system in Carroll County to, uh, justify the creation of a separate veterans' treatment court.
Right.
Now, that said, uh, I also recently spoke with, um, Human Services Program about working with them, uh, to establish, uh, at least a system, a process so that when veterans do come before the court.
Right.
We can coordinate with Human Services and Veterans Affairs and try to get veterans the services that they need, in connection with some criminal proceeding.
Right.
That the court's involved in. So, um, we are sensitive to, um, veterans who come before the court. I will tell you that even without a veterans' treatment court, uh, when, it's seldom that a, a veteran appears before me or, or my colleagues in a criminal case where we don't know that that individual is a veteran.
Right.
It's brought to our attention. Um, and their service record sometimes is a part of the information that's presented to the court. And when that individual needs treatment, all the judges are aware that those individuals may be eligible for treatment through the Veterans Administration. Uh, and so we try to direct services, um, that, that, uh, that veterans are eligible for that they might not be otherwise, that other individuals might not be eligible for.
Yeah.
So, um, we're also, um, so I don't think, um, that now, uh, as we sit here, much has changed in the last six years in terms of, um, having the number of veterans in the criminal justice, which is a good thing, right? Uh, that we don't have a sufficient number of veterans in the criminal justice system to justify the creation of a, um, veterans' treatment court here. I've been approached to, well, about whether, um, we could sort of share the load with other counties. Could Carroll County join forces with another county?
Right.
And maybe have a veteran, a regional veterans' court, right? It's a, it, on paper, that sounds like it's not a bad idea. In practice.
Right.
Circuit Court for Carroll County is an independent, uh, court from the Circuit Court for Frederick County, for example. And if you're charged with a crime in Carroll County, well, you go to court in Carroll County, you don't go to court in Frederick County. So coordinating those services amongst counties is, um, a little more difficult to do in the circuit court. The district court across the street, uh, has more statewide jurisdiction than circuit courts do, which are essentially confined to the, the local counties. So it's something I'm happy to continue to talk to the board about.
Right.
Happy to, um, do what we can do to try to, uh, assist veterans where the court can do so.
Right.
Consistent, of course, with our judicial ethical responsibilities.
And then this in no way minimizes your intent to service our veterans. This in no way is, you know, uh, lessening, you know, the service that our veterans should be provided when going through the system. You know, and you know, I used to run the installation and I had general court martial convening authority. And I would make decisions based on everything around me. And sometimes it wasn't putting them into, uh, a jail, but it was getting them into a hospital or other services. All the tools are available. Um, and I think again, that's why we do it so well in Carroll County because we understand all of the relationships and tools.
I mean, I'll give you an example, not to cut you off, but, um, within the last few months, I had a veteran appear before me in a criminal case and it was this veteran's fifth conviction for, uh, driving under the influence of alcohol or drugs or driving while impaired by alcohol or drugs. Serious, right? I knew that the individual need treatment. I knew that the, um, the case also demanded, uh, some level of consequence or punishment for the individual's actions. So the sentence, uh, that I imposed combined, uh, a certain amount of punishment or consequence with treatment. And the treatment in that individual's case was done through a veterans' hospital.
Yep.
Where the individual was allowed to go there, even though they were technically in what we call the constructive custody of the jail. So if they left the hospital, it would be like escaping from the jail.
Right.
But we had them do that treatment at the veterans' hospital, which a non-veteran would not be permitted to do. So it's just in, um, so that you understand that the court generally is made aware and when we are made aware that, um, the defendant is a veteran, we try to tailor the services that the court is going to require or order to that individual's, uh, needs and availability.
No, that, that's a, that's a great example. Um, and again, I apologize to my colleagues taking this kinda off into a tangent, but it has been a topic of discussion.
Well, I, I think part of it is people don't understand what drug court is and what people have to go through to do it. Having seen, uh, been to many of the graduations, and I see these people in the community, I talk to them occasionally, and they are right to the, uh, individual person. They saved my life. They got me turned around. I'm, I'm a productive member of society and they're very grateful. And I, I know you do the same for everybody. I, I just think it's perception. People in the general community do not know exactly what goes on, uh.
I appreciate you saying that. And, and you should also know that we have had over the years, and we currently have veterans in our program.
Yep.
In our drug treatment court program. So it's not a veterans' court program, but, um, there are a lot of overlap similarities between our program and veterans' treatment courts.
Well, I appreciate Colonel Ralstein bringing this issue up and I appreciate your candidness about this because I think we've all been getting some lobbying about this subject. And I've emphasized I have to stay neutral until I'm briefed on it. But I must say that the heaviest weight upon my decision on this is ultimately the administrative judge and the position you hold. So I appreciate you briefing us on this.
I'm happy to talk to you at any time.
Okay.
Either in an open session or we need to get together, we can do that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anything else, Judge Hecker? I really appreciate your time.
Sure.
Thanks so much. And now let's talk about FY twenty twenty-three macro court ADR grant application acceptance of the award. Sir.
Good morning, honors. Um, I'm here today to request from the court, uh, permission and to make the application for the administrative office of the courts mediation and conflict resolution office and, um, alternative dispute resolution grant. It's a grant that provides for court mediation and alternative dispute resolution services, uh, through the courthouse. Uh, we have one full-time staff member, uh, who provides day of court mediation and helps, and what we, what we like to call preventative mediation to, uh, prevent them from having to be a contested hearing on the day of court by reaching out to them ahead of time to provide mediation services for the community. Uh, it also provides some mediation services for, uh, Sino Mediations. That's child need of assistance cases. Um, those are in particular very contentious cases and oftentimes, uh, very difficult for the people involved. And so we're really glad to be able to provide those services. This is the seventh year in which we're coming to you to request, uh, to renew our grant application for this. But it provides for those services as well as, uh, some training and supply funds for that.
This position takes pressure off the judge's docket too, doesn't it?
Absolutely. That's part of the idea of it being day of court. When, actually right now, while Judge Hecker is here, I believe one of my staff members is working with, um, people that are on his docket right now.
Well, I move that the board of commissioners approve the submission of the FY twenty-three macro court ADR grant application and accept the award.
Second. I got a motion, I got a second. The only discussion, I, I love these county matches. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Good deal. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very much. You all have a good day.
Yep.
Yeah, we get some really good return on investment.
Specimen, specimen ballots twenty twenty-two gubernatorial primary and general elections.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I think Katie should be joining virtually. I'm not sure if she's getting pulled up or not with the issues there. But I can start and then see if she joins. Would you like her to join here?
There, there with me a second. Is she joining or?
Chris was aware that she was.
Chris, is, uh, Katie Berry joining us?
Yes, she's on here. Uh, if you have, she's, wanna change the viewing from, uh, the speaker to everyone, you can see her. She's, uh, just tell her to turn her camera on and she will.
Okay, Katie, why don't you turn your camera on and I'll be able to see you. I mean, Commissioner Weaver has a face for radio, but you don't, so.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Absolutely.
Okay. I, I just came out of surgery and I'm recovering, so I would prefer not to be on camera.
Absolutely, absolutely no problem. Um.
Thank you.
Sure thing. Eli, why don't you start?
Sure. So the officer procurement in cooperation with the board of elections requests your approval to award a contract for the purchase of specimen ballots for the twenty twenty-two gubernatorial primary and general elections to Corporate Communications Group in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. The officer procurement solicited for quotes and received one response listed below, and the amount is within the adopted budget. And a quick note on that, the funds for the general election will actually fall into the FY twenty-three budget, not FY twenty-two. And for anything else, I'll turn it over to Katie at this point.
Thank you, Eli. I think that summarizes what we are requesting today. Um, as you know, we have the specimen ballot that goes out after every, or before every election. And, um, in this particular instance, we have to get the commissioners to approve it.
Okay.
Is this hundred and five, hundred and five thousand, uh, for primary and general? Because you said to.
Yes, it, yes. And I do have the breakout if you'd like. So for the primary, it was sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and the general is forty-one thousand, seven hundred and three dollars.
But for general, it's gonna be on next year's budget?
Next year's budget.
Okay.
So, I'm, okay, and we're just totaling it up for this action? I mean.
For this, for this purpose, yeah.
Okay. Interesting.
All right, seems pretty cut and dry to me. So, uh, these things always go out and if it's within the budget, I'm good. So I move that we award the contract for the specimen ballots for twenty twenty-two gubernatorial and general to Corporate Communications Group, one hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion? Katie, hoping you feel better and recover real soon. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a good day.
You too. Okay, Eli, you're one for one. Let's see what happens. Purchase of radio and communication items. Uh, for fire EMS, for firing EMS. Okay. Go for it.
The officer procurement in cooperation with the Department of Public Safety requests your approval to purchase three mobile radios and vehicle chargers in the amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. And two portable radios and accessories in the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents for a total amount of thirty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. The purchase will be made from a Motorola Solutions co- contract, a Maryland state contract that was competitively bid. And the amount is within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be necessary.
Okay.
Commissioners, that these are the devices that are needed to equip the vehicles that were previously approved for the Department of Fire and EMS as well as the two positions. And these are standard issue and applicable to both the vehicles and the positions.
Director Campbell, I bet you've seen a big evolution in the technology over these systems since you started.
Are you telling me I'm old, Commissioner?
I'm old too. I'm just saying.
You're absolutely right. And, uh, I'm sure Commissioner Wenskin can relate, uh, uh, relate to back in the early days of our respective careers of using old low-band radios and one or two channels. And you didn't have trunking and high-band and all. So, um, even though the cost has gone up significantly, the technology and the capabilities is remarkable.
Was it slow signals?
Used a bullhorn, didn't it, when you started?
I apologize, Commissioner. I did not want to go there.
You really stirred the pot, Campbell.
I started down the right path. I was leaning on your.
See, see what you did, you know? Bullhorn, slow signals.
I move the board of commissioners approve the purchase of five radios, chargers and accessories from Motorola, Motorola Solutions in the amount of thirty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I'll second that to get us out of this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Happily aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about Union Mills watershed. And Mike, you're looking very green back there. Just let you know. Okay, gentlemen.
It's another all-star cast.
I came to you with the preliminary recommended CIP. We talked a little bit about land we own in the Union Mills area and possibility of beginning planning for a park there. And at the time, I said, I thought you needed to think about a couple of things before we moved ahead with this. One was, uh, we bought this land for a reservoir, which is not happening now, at least. Do we wanna keep the land? Chris will talk in a few minutes about why he believes we should. And then my second thing was, if we want to keep the land, do we wanna spend money to develop that as a park? And that is part of a larger idea that we've talked about from time to time. Not just parks, but infrastructure in general. Every time we build something new, we have something to maintain and something to renew or replace at, at some point. And parks is a special case. We get money from the state that we use to purchase land for parks and to do some of the development of the parks. So we have this flow of revenue that makes it very easy to say, well, yeah, we've got money, let's develop a park. Uh, but what we need to do is hold on to the idea that eventually other expenditures go along with that. And Jeff will talk more about that idea.
Thank you, Ted. Good morning, commissioners. Uh, I wanna talk a little bit about the history. Ted mentioned that this property has been acquired with the purpose of, uh, potentially being the site for a reservoir. And property has continued to be acquired over a long period of time. A lot of this has been done on a piecemeal basis. When the property was acquired, in many occasions, we inherited old farm roads. In some cases, fire roads were developed, which was a part of the maintenance of the property. And then we've had volunteers that have developed trails on this property as well. And then, we've had volunteers that have developed trails on this property as well. All of you, I'm hoping, have on your screen, map, everything that you see. The yellow lines on there are all existing trails. Some of these have been there for as long as forty years. Some are more recent. And what has happened, as we have purchased additional properties along the way, a lot of times, there is a movement among our equestrian council or other volunteers to add another section of the trail. And it may be to get additional mileage. It may be to put it in a better location, maybe a less wet or more easily maintainable location. So, when you look closely at this, you see a lot of parallel trails. We believe that some number of those could be eliminated. Pick the best route and keep one, where we don't lose the recreational value that it's had for many years, but it also minimizes the maintenance that we're doing now.
That's a lot of squiggly lines. It's very easy to get lost back there.
There are about sixteen miles plus or minus of trails through there. It is the largest trail network that we have in our park system. It is all natural surface trails. We have multiple parking areas where people can access the trails. We get use from hikers, mountain bikers, equestrian use. And frankly, people travel from pretty good distances to use these. We've heard from the mountain bike community because of the hilly terrain there. It's a great place to train for various events that these folks participate in. Equestrians, that's a very large group economically. They travel to use this as well. We have a Hoshua Hills race, which is held every year, probably for at least twenty-five years. The last version of that race, we had about a hundred and twenty registrants. They came from eight states, including California, and we had one foreign entry in it. So, it's got a great, great history of usage. What we're looking to do with this master plan that we had requested for an overall trail plan is to not start with a blank slate, because clearly, we don't have a blank slate. We've, we've got sixteen miles of trails. What we want to do is look at which ones should we keep, which ones should we eliminate? And then, if there are opportunities for new trails, where should we build those? We want to minimize the number of stream crossings, because stream crossings become bridges, and bridges are very expensive. And it speaks to what Ted said with our inventory and then potentially capital replacement one day. So, we want to minimize the number of crossings. Potentially, all these trails get funneled into a smaller number of crossings. In retrospect, we perhaps should have called it something different than a master plan, because normally, when you hear that word, it's, well, here's a property that we bought. There's nothing on it. Here's what we'd like to plan to do with it. This is really more of renovations that we are looking at to an existing network of trails. As I said, there will be some impact on our infrastructure and inventory, but a lot of this is already in place. And before I turn it over to Chris, I do want to recognize Brad Rogers. He's in the back of the room. If you can wave back there. When we talk about maintenance of these trails, we have volunteers that do various projects on it, but most of the maintenance is done by Brad and his crew, which more often than not is interpreted as Brad will take care of it.
Doesn't Mr. Roger have, Rogers have to save the people back there, get lost?
Well, that, that's another thing that comes into play with this, is when we look at where these trails should be located, you talk about the maintenance, the sustainability of them, but also the safety of them. How can we get people out? Because they do get lost and they do get hurt on occasion. So, that's what this effort would be designed to accomplish. And we wanted to share that with the board, and I know there were other, other questions or other issues, and certainly, at the end, we'd open it up to all of you.
And I believe some of the trails inadvertently caused more erosion because of the way they're set up and they weren't, there was no foresight in how those trails were developed.
Correct. And again, a lot of these trails were inherited. Previous property owner may have had a road there or some sort of a trail that then became a public use trail over time. So, we would be looking to improve that. And I'll turn it over to Chris at this point to talk about the water, which is why the property was purchased in the first place.
Sure, yes. Good morning, commissioners. So, water supply is an, it's an ever-changing kind of landscape that we have to deal with. And planning for what kind of water supply we need, it can be challenging. Really, the easy part is, is projecting future need, as in economic growth and residential growth and so on, and how much water is available from a groundwater perspective, surface water perspective, and all that. Where it's difficult is, it's tough to predict what's going to change from a regulatory perspective, from the state and federal agencies that oversee water appropriations. What's going to happen in short-term weather seasons and, and climate change? And right now, the past couple of years, we've had relatively wet seasons, twenty eighteen especially. So, water supply is really not at the forefront in that public discussion. However, probably, you all remember back to two thousand two, twenty years ago, and we had a very significant drought. Some refer to it as, considered it a fifty-year drought. And so, it's for those purposes that, ever since the nineteen sixties, three reservoirs owned by the county have been proposed and planned for here in the county. Those are Piney Run, Gillis Falls, and Union Mills. Those reservoirs have been in all of our water and sewer master plans that are approved by MDE over the years. And most recently, they're documented in our Water Resources Element, which is a part of the comprehensive plan that was adopted in twenty-ten, and MDE and MDP, Maryland Department of the Environment and Maryland Department of Planning, have both been putting out documentation as far as how we should be looking to update those plans from twenty-ten. And so, those plans all document what water supply issues, wastewater treatment, stormwater, water quality, and so on that we need to, to look at to help guide our comprehensive planning efforts. So, what's interesting about the Union Mills watershed and Union Mills reservoir is that it actually drains west, drains west towards the Monocacy River. And why that's important is, the eastern half of the county all drains towards reservoirs that are owned and controlled by Baltimore City. And so, therefore, Baltimore City has a stake in the appropriation and use of all the water that drains from the east side of the county. Union Mills drains west, so they would not be involved in the appropriation process if we were to move forward or when we move forward with that appropriation. So, that's something to take into consideration, because both Piney Run and Gillis, Baltimore City has a stake in, in that appropriation. So, in the mid nineteen seventies, there is a huge push from the county and municipalities to establish water supply for, at Union Mills, for Westminster, Hampstead, and Manchester. Those plans projected out that by today, by twenty-twenty, that the reservoir would be in place. But primarily because of cost issues, then it has not moved forward. But still, because things change from a regulatory perspective, climate change, et cetera, it's really important that we have the infrastructure in place that we have so that maybe it's twenty years from now, maybe it's fifty years from now, when surface water supply is needed, that we've got the infrastructure and, and land in place for that. So, happy to answer any questions they might have about the reservoir.
How do the trails impact on this? Positively or negatively? I mean, we're just having trails at the present time?
They would not. They would not have an impact on it.
Okay. So, we're not developing these, I mean, we're not hard to service, and we're not putting any more into it than just earth and trail, right?
The infrastructure that could be improved or added as a part of this effort would be limited to the parking areas where people would access the trails. And as I said earlier, there could be a limited number of bridges that would go in there. Now, typically, if we're using program open space funds for something like that, we need to have a useful life on whatever is built of twenty years. If you all made a decision today to build a reservoir, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think you could do it in twenty years.
Yeah. Your point's well taken. I've mentioned many times, clean potable water is going to be an issue in this county. Maybe not in our lifetime, but in the future. It's one issue that I've said many times, we have to be aware of. And we keep putting housing developments in, we keep putting runoff into places, and clean water gets more scarce all the time. I agree with everything you said on that, and yet, I like Jeff, you know, take this down, let's condense it and make it, you know, equestrian trails, bicycle trails, and we'll get, we'll find Commissioner Fraser when he gets lost.
I didn't say nothing. I know over Gillis Falls, there's wellheads drilled all over the place. Do we have wellheads drilled in this area, too?
So, one of the first phases that was recommended in the Water Resources Element was to drill wells to, to, to start that water supply and actually to run a line down to Westminster to augment the Westminster supply. Unfortunately, the wells were not productive. And so, that has not moved forward.
So, you did an evaluation of it, or?
Yes.
I will state that this park is the premier park in the county for hiking. And Parks and Rec or Rakin Parks are a partnership for Healthier Carroll County. And their walk, or Walk in the Park program this year, the last park we will be walking is this one in December. So, it's the cherry on top of everything. I'm a tremendous fan of this. Mr. Rogers took me out there on the ATV riding around. I can see why it's so easy to get lost out there, because when I went back and ventured around, I didn't venture too far. I've been lost. Great program.
That is one of the nicest things about this property, is the length of the network. It's much larger than anything else that we have, and it's a very different type of experience, because you can literally get yourself lost out there, get away from the distractions of everyday life. You have a lot of wildlife opportunities, a lot of fitness opportunities, and it ties in very nicely with what we've done at some other locations.
Just a side question. Have we ever thought about marketing all of the timber on the county grounds? I had a forester tell me, we probably have a quarter of a million dollars worth of timber starting to die on county grounds, that we really should start to look at marketing this saleable timber, a selective cutting, I guess. We've never really pursued anything.
I know Facilities has done that on a limited basis at some sites in the past. I couldn't tell you the last time it was done for any of the areas up at Union Mills.
Lots of acreage out here, and it's a marketable commodity. Now, it's a crop like anything else, has a useful life, a little longer useful life, but when a tree hits a certain size and with the oaks dying and everything, I don't see why, right at the present time, we don't use, put this out, get a forester to manage it, and market the county timber. Be a good source of revenue for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a yard.
Then, then you got to look at paying a forester.
Yeah, he takes care of that. They do it for about ten percent of what they do, and that's all taken care of in the plans. And they do the forestry plan permits. They do everything. And I think you have to run everything by before it's done, so it's something, maybe Parks and Rec, whoever has control of this.
Department of Public Works tends to be the responsible department for the land that the county, all the land that the county owns.
Forestation.
With, with the few exceptions of the parks.
And next year, we could have reading in the park.
I can, we can see what, we can look into that.
Congratulations, Ted.
With, with, I'll add one last thing. With the amount of wetlands down there, how big of a challenge will this be for us with trails across wetlands and MDE? Is that a challenge to us? And is there a potential for funding from the state to help with those challenges?
As far as funding to address environmental impacts, probably not, because the state typically does not put forth funding to address mitigation-type measures. Right? So, from that perspective, probably not. Any sort of proposed development, whether it's trailers and so on, would need to go through the appropriate permitting process, and if there are wetland impacts and, and so on, we would need to address those.
So, it'll be paying close attention to what we do down there, and that's reassuring for people out there concerned about that issue as well.
So, a couple of questions for me, since I get asked about this all the time, and I get all the feel-good stories. That's wonderful. But, but the citizens up there, when I first got into office, this was one of the first questions. Y'all have property. What are you doing? So, from a fiscal standpoint, by sitting on this property, what is the challenges? And if they are challenged, then why aren't we moving ahead with the reservoir? We know we're going to need water. Why wait twenty years from now? Why not start the process now? And what would the challenges be associated with saying, okay, let's begin the process now, knowing like what Commissioner Weaver said, it's inevitable?
Sure.
So, if you put it off, you keep kicking that can down there, why not start now if we've got the property? So, the folks that live up there are always asking, on a pretty regular basis, what are y'all doing? You sitting on it? What's it costing you? Why not sell it if you're never going to do anything? So, there's eighty-seven questions.
Is this, is this out of the three, is this the least contentious for transition to a reservoir? I mean, Piney definitely is-
Before Chris's time, we actually did explore putting in a reservoir out there, and there was contention. We, we had people who were objecting, and I can remember a few people who were pretty frequent visitors to the county office building specifically because of looking at a reservoir. So, I, I have no doubt if we move ahead, that that will be true again. And then, you know, when we did look at this, it's hard to remember timing now, but we, we considered it very seriously. But the board at the time said, no, we're not moving ahead with this now. Nothing more has happened since then.
Yeah, so, I mentioned the Water Resources Element of the Comprehensive Plan, and that was last adopted in twenty-ten. And really, the purpose of that plan, or of that element as well, that document, is to look at water supply issues, wastewater treatment, water quality, flooding, all of, everything water-related and how it would affect growth in the, in the county. In that plan, it identified that the designated growth areas of our municipalities, that where those currently stood in twenty-ten, that there was sufficient groundwater to cover that, those growth areas. But it recognized all those other factors that I mentioned, climate change, changes in appropriation guidelines from the state and federal government, that we should be prepared that if those, that change in climate, as it were, and, and how we can appropriate water through groundwater and so on changes, there's going to be a need for other sources. Now, the, the planning level estimate for Union Mills is on the order of a hundred million dollars to, to construct that. So, that would be a pretty heavy lift. So, as, as Jeff said, if there was the willpower right now to move forward with that, it would be a long-term, it's going to be years to go through the appropriation process, go work through MDE and so on, and a sizable investment. So, it's kind of like having it in our back pocket that we've got the land there that forty, fifty years from now, it's, it could be, very well be needed. Is it needed in the next decade, next two decades? Probably not.
Okay. And in the meantime, we're sitting on a lot of property, and what's it costing to sit on it? Not much. I mean, it just kind of does what it does. We're not really putting a whole lot of-
We don't budget anything specifically.
So, nothing up there is costing any of the taxpayers?
Whatever, you know, Jeff referred to some time that Rakin Parks devotes to it. We're not accounting for that, but some, some amount of some people's time.
Right. All right, well, that's a, that's a good explanation then. I mean, you know, at some point, you want to put it to rest. I mean, I know the city of Westminster brought it up, that they, they did the wells, and you just said it, too. And it was found to be, it wouldn't work. So, then that probably would lead, well, if it wouldn't work now, what's going to make it work in twenty years? I don't know.
Just that wells are different from reservoirs.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah. Isn't surface water the least effective water resource option to have?
I'm not sure how to-
I mean, the return on investment of building a reservoir is not that effective, I thought.
I'm going to have to defer to, to someone else on that.
Couldn't we potentially tap into Hyde's Quarry or something like that? There's options besides this one. Also, a dam would potentially put the homestead below a dam as well, correct?
Yes. So, there are all sorts of permitting issues that would need to be addressed if we were to move forward. Working with the Army Corps of Engineers, working with MDE, working with dam safety. Another thing to consider and, and keep in mind with the properties that we own is that current mitigation requirements for stream impacts and wetland impacts and so on, building a reservoir has a huge impact on, on those natural resources, and we would then have to mitigate. So, there is a potential scenario of moving forward with either Gillis or Union Mills and using the other site as a mitigation site for those environmental impacts. So, doing stream restoration work, creating more wetlands and so on to offset the construction at the other site. So, it's another reason- So it's another reason for, for maintaining those properties as potential mitigation.
Kinda like when you cut down trees, you gotta plant two more or something like that.
Exactly, yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you gentlemen.
This is all information only, no action at this point.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I get lost, I'll call Brad.
Okay, FY 23 Annual Transportation Plan. Jeff Stacy. Hundred and forty-three.
Hundred and forty-three?
Days.
Hundred and forty-two.
Hundred and forty-two. Hundred and forty-one in a wake-up.
Yeah.
Good morning, go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners.
You head of transit, so.
All right, well, I wanna start by thanking Commissioner Fraser for agreeing to join our celebration tomorrow in transit appreciation.
Oh, about that, I'm just kidding.
I take it back.
Yeah, wait, wait, hold on a minute.
We've been celebrating transit appreciation all week. The official transit appreciation day is March 18th every year, but, so it's tomorrow this year. And we're having dinner tomorrow night, Commissioner Fraser's coming. So I know the staff and the drivers all appreciate that recognition. Today, I'm here to get your final approval for our FY 23 Annual Transportation Plan. We were back before you in January with the same information, but to advertise for the public hearing. We did not have any requests for a public hearing, so we did not hold one. But we are back now to get your final approval on this budget in order to submit the second part of the application. Ridership hasn't changed much. I know that Commissioner Fraser mentioned that this morning. Things are going smoothly, no huge increases in ridership. But again, more drivers, I think, will then show an increase in ridership. But we did have our highest ridership day on the Black Trailblazer route just the other day with 49 passengers in one day. That is better than pre-COVID numbers. So something is working. So if we look at the proposed operating budget on the briefing paper first, this is almost the same as the last time you saw it. The only change here is our budget for fuel. We increased it from 300 to 325,000, which is consistent with the per gallon price in the fleet budget for FY 23. This increase does not have any impact on the county match, however. We decided that we would use all cares funding for all over match. So increasing that budget doesn't change what the county's portion needs to be. That $305,000 of required county match stays the same as when you saw it in January. The capital budget has also slightly changed. Back in January, I was still using last year's numbers for vehicle prices, which I knew were low. Well, I didn't know what the actual ones were gonna be yet. So both my budget analyst and I worked on a number that we thought was reasonable and we were close. We were about $3,000 high. So this is lower than when you saw it in January by about $3,000. MTA just provided me with current vehicle pricing. So the actual amount for the four vehicles we will be requesting is that $207,000 with the required county match of $27,029. The last few years, we've been awarded three vehicles and we've requested four. So if that's the case again this year, we'll get three vehicles, which would mean our county match would wind up ending lower. It's 10% of whatever that purchase price is. Preventative maintenance is staying the same as you saw in January and as it has been for the past couple of years. So any questions on budget or transit in general?
The vendor expenses, 175,000 increase, what is that predominantly?
The vendor expenses. Predominantly, it's just the increase to the hourly rate that is built into the contract.
Which is what?
Off the top of my head. It's different for demand response and Trailblazer. They are based off of revenue hours. It's a 5% increase of whatever it is now, 23, 24, give or take.
That's, that's right.
It was built, yeah, it was a built-in increase to cover their expenses, salaries, because they're primarily staffing of all the drivers and their, their operations.
Are all the drivers wage?
Yes.
I'll make the motion, the Board of Commissioners approves submission of FY 23 Annual Transportation Plan and accept the FY 23 Grant Award.
I got a couple of seconds, okay. I got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Told you it'd be easy.
I wasn't worried.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good to walk in.
Okay, so let's, I apologize. Request approval for Union Mills Homestead Foundation, applying for Preservation Maryland Heritage Fund Grant for Structural Assessment for the Bowman Bridge at Union Mills. Hopefully that's why you're here.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, as you said, we're here today on behalf of the Union Mills Homestead Foundation to request your approval to apply for Preservation Maryland Heritage Fund Grant for the structural assessment for the Bowman Bridge at Union Mills. The historic Bowman Bridge designed by Wendell Bowman and dating back to 1879 is located on the Union Mills Homestead where it crosses the Griss Mill Tail Race. An engineering survey was conducted by the county in 2019 identifying substantial large cracks upon the bridge's cast iron vertical members affecting the structural integrity of the bridge. The engineering firm recommended an inspection, an analysis of the bridge and repairs prior to the bridge being used by pedestrian traffic again. The bridge has been closed to pedestrian traffic since that time. The Union Mills Homestead Foundation would like to apply for a grant to perform a more detailed structural assessment of, of the bridge. The project assessment is expected to be, or expected to cost 13,800. The grant request is for 10,000. And the Union Mills Homestead Foundation has committed to covering the remaining costs of that study.
When is the assessment gonna take place?
Uh, we would, we'd have to get the grant, we'd have to be successful in the grant application.
So if you don't, if you're not successful, they're not gonna do the assessment, they're just gonna keep the bridge closed?
There, there's, so, yeah, there's, there's been a couple of thoughts of what to do, but since they're going to do this assessment and see how to historically replace the bridge, we have since not taken steps to, initially DPW was going to, sort of had a plan in place to support the bridge from underneath, non-historical restoration of the bridge. But since this is taking place, we're kinda backed on, on that and let this take place if they get the grant funding to see how to historically fix the bridge.
Right. One of, one of the things that we've talked about, since this is our, you know, it's our bridge, this was relocated to the site that it is on now from another part of the, of the creek, is to basically build a platform underneath for the bridge to sit on. That would become the structural aspect, the, the struc-, you know, structural piece for pedestrian traffic with the bridge basically resting on top of it. Kind of the shell sitting on top of a structural, you know, so because of the cost and, you know, other priorities, what we have for projects that are on that site, that's what we're doing in order to reopen that back up. Cause we understand the concerns that have come up during different events that we, that they would like to have that open for use for pedestrians, but also it's nice to have, to keep the historic nature of it. So we have a few, we have a plan B in place if later on, we don't get the grants or if the funding later, you know, after the study's performed. Cause that's also the concern is what the cost will be to renovate, this is a cast-in-place type of structure. It's not, you can't go over there and weld it, I mean, as, as you know, Commissioner.
Cast iron is difficult.
Especially at historic natures, there's gonna be a lot, there's, it's gonna be an expensive repair. So it's something that we'd have to look at and put into the budget and see what funds may be available at that time, if that's a priority of, of the board sitting at that time.
I am always fascinated by these older bridges. I know there's a bridge down in San Antonio, Texas around the same age that has car traffic on it to this day. So there is ways to salvage these things. I'd be interested in potentially going out with some staff and taking a look at it, you know, sometime in the future and get a better understanding of it. And I like the fact that we're willing to preserve it, cause it is part of our history. With that, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the Union Mills Homestead Foundation to apply for a $10,000 grant through Maryland Heritage Fund for the structural assessment of Bowman Bridge Road at Union Mills, or Bowman Bridge at Union Mills.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Okay, now I'll ask questions because that is way too quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Will you state?
First of all. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, it's all good.
Yeah. First of all, if we already did a study in 2019 identifying the fact that it can't be used, why are we doing another study?
So this particular study that they're applying for, for a grant is, is more to do, so there's three, three things. They're gonna do an assessment of the damages to the bridge. And they're going to give recommendations on how to historically renovate this bridge.
Okay.
Versus, like, like you said, we had an assessment set, damage is too great, can't, they can't have foot traffic across there anymore. You can restore it from underneath, but yeah, that was, that was the extent that we went with it.
And the.
Union Mills would like to restore the bridge to its original glory.
So the foundation's going after the grant.
Yes.
Yet it's our property.
Yes.
So that gets a little interesting too.
It does, we've done that in the past. We, we put a memorandum of understanding in place between the two parties. So we, we more or less manage the grant and the grant funds and the reimbursement, we kinda hand it off to them, they send it to the state for reimbursement. So it has been done in the past. And we do think in this case, the Union Mills Homestead has, has a little more leverage for this particular type of grant than we would.
Okay. Okay.
That's good.
That's a good answer. I, I just, you know, I think that the, the very fact is it needs to be repaired and it needs to be repaired historically. I've just, if, if this was county money, I, I, I'd be a little bit, I, I don't know that I'd be for this. I would say, let's just move on and repair it historically, cause it, it could be done. But since the foundation's going after a grant, I'll, I'll go ahead with that. It's just gonna delay the process.
What this will, what this project will also provide us is the specifications in order to put, as we go to put this out for procurement, to come up, to find the right contractor, the right professionals, artisans, to, to be able to bid, uh, bid on this project. This will provide us the, the specification details in order to have a better document we put out on the street.
Okay.
Uh, cause last thing we want to do is, you know, we don't, we don't need, you know, we, we wanna make sure, we ensure the right people are doing the work, as we've seen with some of the wood structures at the, on the property or when Dean had those roofing contractors out there. Everything has to be, is meticulously detailed in the work and how they perform it has to be completed the same way as when it was originally constructed. This will provide us some of those specifications requirements to ensure we get it, if we decide, if the board at the time decides to move forward with the project, that we, we would be able to have, do it right the first time, getting on the street.
Okay. As long as that's in there, that, that's good, because it sort of then eliminates additional steps. If we can, that's part of that grant, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just, you know, it seems like we're going through additional steps here that we really wouldn't have to. But if they're gonna identify some of those things, that's fine.
They will identify some of them, they will not, in, in this particular grant request, it will not get us construction documents that we can put out to bid. That, that would be a, a next step from this report.
And then who's going after that funding?
That, that's, this kind of, this will, this would definitely let us know, or give us a better idea of what the cost of actually restoring this historically accurately will be. So I think this is a good first step, rather than, rather than spend all that money on plans and specifications, unless, I mean, unless the board, I mean, if the board says they want to, whatever the cost, we wanna replace this, or, you know, we wanna, we wanna repair this historically, then that's, you know, that's something that we could maybe modify this grant to go after, a bigger bite of that apple. But currently, it's just, let's see what, where all the damage is, let's get the assessment, let's get some, let's get some initial sketches. I mean, it's almost like concept plans, you know, some initial sketches, some initial specs. And then we'll know what it will cost, we should know what it will cost us.
If the bridge wasn't there at all, how would it affect pedestrian traffic?
I mean, so they're, they're using the site now, people, people come down the other side of the Miller's house. There, there is no way of crossing the tail race that goes back into Big, Big Pike Creek.
Yeah, Big Pike.
So there, there's no, there's no way of crossing the tail race between the homestead and Big Pike Creek at this point in time.
But we could, you could leave the bridge as it is, to look at it historically, not physically walk on it.
Right.
And construct a nice wood arch bridge, something that the weddings could use.
Okay.
You know, something else could be constructed and, and that site could be protected and, you know, nicely coordinated off to where nobody can, you know, go on it versus the caution tape that we have today.
Okay.
So we, we, we do have other options if that's, if that's a path that everybody would like to go to also.
Okay.
I potentially, I'm sorry. I potentially see Civil War reenactors, cavalry and cannons going across this bridge.
The, um, the last part of what you shared about the assessment, my concern is that they're gonna paint us into a corner.
I have the same concern, Commissioner.
Okay.
So, uh, some of the way, the documents.
I, I know, I know, it was like, that was, that was like the next.
Some of the way, some of the way the documents were worded, kind of, kind of, you know, led, would have led the grant, the people who are doing the grant application would have led them to believe that, that we were committing to going down that road. I've since had a conversation with the president out there and they're, they're going to change the language in the grant application to not commit us to doing an additional step. They, it may have made them less competitive in the grant application process, but unless, like I said, unless the board was willing to tell me, to tell them that it's okay to, we'll, we'll repair it at any cost. I told him that language has to come out before he makes the application.
Yeah, I, I don't agree with that. I don't agree we pay for it at any cost. I think that language needs to be in there. And, you know, I, I would recommend amending, you know, the motion that pending that language be put in there.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying they're gonna do anything inappropriate, but I don't want us, our taxpayers in our county, be paying into a quarter using any of our dollars for something that, you know, for being given a bill without, you know, anything.
100% agree.
I, I've thought of the same thing, that's why I told, I called him ahead of time and said, this language has to come out unless I get approval.
Yep.
Then for procedure, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Okay.
That, that's fine. I, I just, which is why I asked the question about, if the bridge is not there, you can't use the bridge now. So is it, is it drastically affecting pedestrian traffic out there? Probably not.
No.
And is it a nice place to look at and say, gosh, look at that historical bridge? And put two posts on either side of it instead of caution tape or whatever you do, so that you can't go across it? I, I just wanna make sure, and I, I was trying to find the politically correct terminology here. I don't wanna get pushed in, well, you gotta do the bridge now.
Agreed.
So that's, that's where I'm, I'm at. I just, it's a great place, but the bridge is what it is. It's not a big, it's not, you know.
I think going after a grant to do a set, that, that's fine.
Right.
I just, you're right, it may make them less competitive by saying, hey, we're going after this grant and, you know, but we are not committing our county to fund the repairs if the, you know, you know, whatever it is.
Right, one step at a time.
Yeah, one step at a time. And you're right, it may make them less competitive, but that's okay for me.
If, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
I'm not sure what my motion was.
The original one with your, your modifier on it.
Yeah. Okay. Have them apply for the grant with the amendment that it is not committing our county to follow-on dollars.
Second.
Okay. Is that good enough, Tim?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? I really appreciate the conversations. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
Do me a favor, please, when you arrange for me to do the site tour, that is Commissioner Wance's district, please keep him informed.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Andy, bring us home with the next three actions. It's always the exciting stuff at the end. The North Pump Station.
Is that a green color?
And sanitary main.
Quite the buildup there.
And sanitary main replacement project. Change order request for additional work. Oh, we love change orders, don't we? Okay, please.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Utilities requests the Board of Commissioners approval of a change order to Iqersham Construction and Engineering in the amount of 13,000. of a change order to Wickersham Construction and Engineering in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars for additional work related to the North Pump Station and sanitary main replacement project. The cost of these improvements is within the adopted budget and capital project. No additional funding will be necessary. Commissioners, um, we're asking the approval of the change order due to the resolution nine fifty-one dash twenty fifteen, which is the signing authority policy. This policy states that directors can sign up to, uh, ten percent of the original amount of the purchase order, or a hundred thousand dollars, whichever is less. Um, in this case, this current change order slightly, um, increased, increases the amount over a hundred thousand dollars, which is less than the ten percent of the overall purchase order, but that's what we're asking for.
So we were expecting a change order to come in.
I'll talk more about that.
Yeah, please.
Gentlemen, the, the work on the new pump station is nearing completion. The two remaining items include the installation of the generator and the connections to the sewer, sewer gravity enforced mains to allow sewage flow to and from the pump station. This remaining work is scheduled for the early to mid-April timeframe when the generator is due to arrive. And just, just as a reminder, the new, the new North Pump Station has been relocated, relocated approximately one thousand seven hundred feet northwest of the existing North Pump Station to, uh, to accommodate the IDA property and the need for a separate county maintained pump station on the ID, IDA property itself. And, uh, and, and in line with that, this relocation required the construction of new gravity and, and, uh, force mains. Uh, this change order, uh, involves the work associated with the gravity main tie-in portion of the project. The construction plans instructed the contractor to excavate and, and to construct the new gravity main under an existing thirty-eight by, by fifty-seven inch corrugated metal storm drain line. Upon, upon reviewing this location in more detail, it was agreed that from a safety and constructability standpoint, the better technique would be to, to remove a twenty-foot segment of the storm drain line, then construct the gravity sewer line main, and then replace the storm drain segment. So this item is for the additional costs associated with, with, with that change of scope. And as Kerry said, with this orig- with this item, the overall change order total for the project is a hundred and four thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars, or five point five percent of the original one point eight seven million dollar, dollar construction project. This is very consistent with five percent, uh, norms for, for new construction work. Uh, previous change orders included, uh, some additional work related to the pump station's exterior walls, valving improvements, and various site improvements. There have been very small amounts of change orders on, on this project as compared to the overall cost of the project. Uh, with, with, with the site conditions that we had, I, I can't see how, why, why we, we would not have had change orders. I mean, to not anticipate that would have been foolish. So, any questions for me?
More efficient means cost us ninety thousand dollars?
I'm sorry?
A more efficient means cost us ninety thousand dollars?
No, that, 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 this, this item alone was, was, was thirteen thousand. And that's basically for the additional work to take out a twenty-foot segment of storm drain pipe. Um, it would have been very delicate to try and build it as per the plans.
You want to take this one?
Talking to you. Who?
You.
You talking to me?
Whose district is this?
It's the North Pump Station in mine. I'll move the Board of Commissioners-
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It's not mine, but that's okay. I'll take the Board of Commissioners' approval of a change order to Wickersham Construction and Engineering incorporating an amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars for additional work related to the North Pump Station and sanitary main replacement project.
Second.
Okay. I got a motion, I got a second. A little jocularity, any further discussion? Here's, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're one for one. Let's make it two for two. Let's talk about the, the replacement of water service laterals in Carroll Highlands.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for the replacement of water service laterals in Carroll Highlands in the Freedom District to HTI Contractors in the amount of ninety thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. This award will be made via a competitively bid, bid term contract. We solicited bids from four contractors. Uh, we received two bids from, out of the four contractors that we solicited, and bid amount is within the adopted budget. No additional funds will be necessary.
Gentlemen, uh, th- this item continues with our ongoing replacement of aging water service laterals task. As per previous briefings, water service laterals are the lines that connect water mains to the individual properties. The line segment from the main to the meter vault is county-owned and maintained, while the line segment from the meter vault to the home itself is private and not county responsibility. The laterals are typically three-quarter or one-inch diameter copper line, and as they age, they are prone to pinhole leaks. The scope of work only includes the county-owned portion of the service lateral. This item is for forty-one water service laterals, five on Carroll Highlands Court, thirty-four on Carroll Highlands Road, and one each on County, on Country Fair Lane and Harvest Farm Road. And as per previous projects, these, these laterals date to the nineteen seventies, and the basic construction approach will, will be to pull the replacement lines through the ground and not open trench, unless absolutely necessary. And the average unit cost for this work is two thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. This is very consistent with previous bids received for similar projects, and it's a fair value for the scope of work.
I'll tell you, I mean, that's awesome. Fifty, forty, fifty years of, you know, a system working in these lateral systems. So, I'm with the Board of Commissioners' award of contract for the replacement of water service laterals in Carroll Highlands in the Freedom District to HTI Contractors in the amount of ninety thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second.
I got a motion in second. Any further discussion?
If you have a question.
Please.
So we own the line from, uh, main to, to the meter vault, and then the customer has the meter vault to the house.
Correct.
Who owns the meter vault and takes care of that?
We do. The, 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 the house side of the meter vault is where the transition takes place.
Okay.
Okay, two for two. Engineering services for design. Oh, I apologize. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing here none, I thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Last one. Engineering services for the design of the Freedom District Water Treatment Plant Finish Water Pumps Upgrade Project. Just got me excited talking about the Freedom District, that's all. So, go ahead.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for engineering services for the design of the upgrade to the Freedom District, District Water Treatment Plant Finish Water Pumps to CDM Smith, Inc., in the amount, amount of ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. CDM Smith is currently under a term contract with the county, and this proposed amount is within the adopted budget. No additional funds will be necessary.
This project is, uh, truly exciting for, for, for my staff and, and myself. Um, as per the briefing paper, the Freedom District Water Treatment Plant underwent a major upgrade in two thousand and eight that resulted in a, in a new facility with a maximum output of four point zero million gallons per day. All of the processing equipment and pumps at the plant were designed to achieve this four point zero million gallons per day volume. Since that time, however, the average daily use within the Freedom Service area has rarely exceeded two point one million gallons per day. Uh, the processed water is pumped out into the service area via, via a twenty-four inch diameter water main and three, three hundred and fifty horsepower output pumps. These three pumps have been in, in rotation and continuous use since two thousand and nine. During non-peak periods, uh, which are primarily midday and overnight, these pumps operate on the low end of their pump efficiency curve and the minimum, minimum recommended flow rate. Continuous operation of these pumps in these low-end areas has led to pump vibration and a general increase in the wa- in the rate of wear and tear. All three of these pumps have been completely rebuilt once, and one of these pumps is beginning to experience, uh, new mechanical issues, issues that will need to be rebuilt a second time relatively soon. To extend the service life of these three hundred and fifty horsepower pumps and to, and to improve the overall plant efficiency, the Bureau would like to install a smaller two hundred horsepower pump in the vacant fourth bay at the plant and remove the worst-conditioned three hundred and fifty horsepower pump and, and replace it with a second two hundred horsepower pump. That three hundred and fifty horsepower pump would, would then be rebuilt to serve as a spare. The, the two remaining three hundred and fifty horsepower pumps would be used during the periods of peak demand, whi- which are mainly weekday mornings and late afternoon and evening periods. And the two, two hundred horsepower pumps would then be used during the non-peak periods of water demands. This will, will reduce wear and tear on the larger pumps, extend their service life, and improve the overall efficiency of the plant itself. And I do have a series of photographs that may add a, a, a little bit more insight to this. Um, n- n- not the best quality photographs, but on, on this screen here, the, the, the existing pumps are actually these white vertical items. So we have three of these major three hundred and fifty horsepower pumps. The, the white vertical is where the processed water is drawn from the clear well, whi- whi- which is beneath this area. And the, and the, the processed water is pumped out into the service area via this piping, uh, network right here. It's, it's relatively hard to pick up on the second photograph, but this concrete pad right here is part of the vacant fourth bay that will, that will, uh, allow the installation of one of those two smaller pumps. And, and, and this is the same item as this right here. It's where the processed water will, will leave the plant and enter the service area. On the next photo down, if anybody, I, I believe two, two of the commissioners have, have, uh, been, been, been to field trips with me at the plant. The main door to the facility is right here. As you walk in, this door right here is the first door on the left. So we have three existing pumps. That's the vacant fourth bay right here. And the final photograph I have, we also need to, uh, uh, upgrade the power room with a, with a, uh, VFD cabinet. And, and foresight from the original construction has space for that fourth cabinet area. So we, we, um, we are in, in relatively good shape as far as the, 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 uh, the space and, and the raw piping that, that's currently in place. Um, and, and the final product for this scope of work will, will result in construction plans and specifications that will then be used for the construction bid process.
Well, Mr. Walker, thanks for supplying the photos. You've given me numerous tours of these facilities. It's absolutely fascinating the amount of mechanical equipment necessary to maintain all this, and I appreciate you being on top of it.
Thank you.
So this might be a silly question, but it appears as if you know exactly what you need to do out here. Why does it take a hundred thousand dollar engineer to tell us what you already know?
Because I can't, I can't hire a contractor and tell him, just make it happen. Um, if, if things go haywire, if there are problems with, with the construction project, I need something to fall back on that'll allow us to make them, make it better or for us to perceive damages. I would love to be able to just bring somebody on board, buy the equipment, and tell them to install it, but I, it, it can't work that way.
Doesn't work that way.
It, is there a licensed engineer or qualification that's necessary to do the design?
Yes, I mean, a, 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 a civil consulting firm's gonna have their, their, their P E licensing and so forth. That's, 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 that's part of this, this, this process as well.
Okay. That's a good answer.
It was a good question, too.
Well, I mean, I just, you know, it seems like because it's already in place and there's room there for all your equipment, this seems like it would be a, let's just roll type of a deal here, and you could eliminate that middleman. But if that's, if you can't do that, then that answers the question.
Without the consulting guidance, I wouldn't know exactly what to tell the contractor to install. I mean, I have a general idea, but-
Okay.
There has to be plans associated with that.
Okay. I'm with the Board of Commissioners' award of contract for engineering service for the design of the upgrade to the Freedom District Water Treatment Plant Finish Water Pumps to CDM Smith, incorporating an amount of ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Is there further discussion on this? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris, we have any public comment?
No comment, sir.
Okay. Anything for open admin? Gentlemen, um, okay. Before we go into close for land acquisition, let's go through agendas. Swanda, why don't you come on up?
Good morning again.
Good morning again. Um, Monday, March twenty-first, we are scheduled for nothing. On the twenty-second, we have a budget presentation, uh, here, uh, from the DIES at nine AM and seven PM is the Ag Center Annual Dinner Meeting, and we are all, all looking forward to attending that. At Wednesday, March twenty-third, Commission on Aging and Disabilities, am I attending that?
Yes.
I'm attending that, not Commissioner Wance. And then eleven-thirty is a Wreckin' Parts Advisory Board meeting and lunching over at Bear Branch, and four of us will be attending that. Commissioner Frazier, Wance, Weaver, and I. Uh, Mako, three PM Legislative Committee meeting and reception down in, uh, Annapolis. Commissioner Frazier and Wance will be attending. On Thursday, March twenty-fourth, we go into open session at nine AM. We'll have our legislative update, a few more of those to go. Go into approval modification of scope for Westminster Veterans Memorial, uh, Park. We will talk about requesting approval to submit application, accepting an award for Emergency Rental Assistance Program, ERAP, uh, from RDCS. Department of Assistant Services COVID Funding Update, uh, Ms. Lynn Steckel will be presenting. We have a request approval to submit application for FY twenty-three Youth and Family Engagement Diffusion Program. And then a Ag Conservation Work Group, where Ms. Linda Eisenberg will be facilitating. FY, at one PM, FY twenty-three Agency Budget Hearings are scheduled.
Just a question before we move on. Why do we have times on these now, which we have in, in the last several agendas?
In the draft, you have the times.
Oh, it's always in the draft?
It's always in the draft.
Okay.
Yeah.
What, what? What is the Ag Conservation Work Group?
That's not, it, um, so, it's just a poorly worded. Um, staff have been working with an outside work group, um, to flesh out what they feel is, would be best zoning-wise. Zoning changes for the ag and conservation zones. Commissioner Weaver's been, uh, part of it. Um, and so this is just, um, an overview of, of what that, um, uh, work group has, has, um, come up with, I guess. They're, they're-
An active work group, I mean, twenty people.
Yeah.
But didn't these work groups for all the other zoning go into planning and zoning?
Yes. So this is just an update to the board, and then it goes to planning and zoning. And then it'll come back to you, and then we'll have work sessions with the board this summer.
So this is information only?
Information only, yeah. And on, on the, um, what's currently item four, that's gonna change to the, the COVID funding. That's gonna be more of an FRF update, um, and there'll be three parts of it. One part is going to be, um, the, the, um, Citizen Services, but there, but, uh, the board, um, you know, recently requested if, uh, any of the municipalities wanted to possibly partner with the county on, um, water, clean water projects. Uh, we've received all their applications. We're reviewing them. So we'll go over those with the board, um, on Thursday, unless something really crazy happens. And then, um, another, um, you know, as we've said before, there are other, um, suggestions or recommendations for, um, modifying how we're planning on spending, um, for the FRF money.
All right. Yeah, I was just curious with the work group, because-
Yeah, that's just-
It's sort of out of step with what we normally did, or what we normally do.
It's just poorly worded. It's not out of step. It's the exact same way we've done it before. It's just a briefing on what the work group did bef- to you before they take it to the planning commission.
So it comes to us, then it goes to planning, then back to us?
For work sessions.
Yeah, right.
For work sessions. And then you make the decision.
Didn't think we did that one.
That's right.
Yeah, I didn't think we did either. That's fine.
Yeah.
Good to be, good to be transparent.
FY twenty-three Agency Budget Hearings at one PM. Friday, we have nothing. On Saturday, four PM, Winfield Fire Department Banquet, Commissioner Boucher will be attending. And then Commissioner Boucher provides the podcast on March twenty-seventh.
If I may, if there's any directors out there that want anything included in the podcast, please get it to me that Monday, and I can include it.
On March twenty-eighth, we have nothing scheduled. On Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, uh, we have our FY twenty-three Agency Hearings, both at nine AM and then at one PM.
Can I add that on the twenty-ninth, at six PM, I'll do the Walk in the Park at Cape Horn Park up in Hampstead on the thing?
Okay. On Wednesday, March thirtieth, Planning Commission, Commissioner Wance will be attending, still virtual?
No, this one is in person, because apparently there's a, there's a subject matter that is gonna have a lot of testimony. And I think it might, I don't know if it's in, it's gotta be in your district.
Thanks.
Just, just let me know.
I think the only thing, now, you know, you're, you're aware, the only thing that's on is, um- on the St. John's Properties. He's interested in developing the B D property, will be doing a special presentation.
Right.
Because there was discussion about, you know, room limitations and how we're going
to keep people from, you know, back in the room, so.
And this was brought up at my town hall.
Right.
And they brought up as well that they're doing this, it's a special session, that's right, the St. John's Properties.
Just introductory to the planning.
Right.
And the citizens.
I may attend.
I was gonna say, you may want to sit there.
Yeah. But I will sit there as a potted plant and no input. This is for them to describe to you. Okay, on Thursday, March thirty-first, we again have open session starting at nine A M. Mr. Fowler will start with his legislative update. We will have a briefing about the twenty-twenty-two Walk Carroll Events in County Parks from Parks and Rec, Wreckin' Parks, excuse me. Request to revise format of public notice signs. Mr. Chris Heim will be talking or discussing. F Y twenty-three Agency Hearings will round out the morning, and then in the afternoon, we will have more budget hearings at one P M, then a local management board meeting. Commissioner Frazier, you're attending?
Yeah, I can attend that if we're gonna have the budget hearings. Yes, I, so just cross that off for me, I won't be able to attend that one.
A local management board is not attending.
Won't be able to do that one.
Right. On Friday, April first, it is not April Fools, there's Sheriff's Police and Correctional Training Academy graduation and annual awards ceremony over at North Carroll High School, and four of us will be attending. Commissioner Frazier?
I can attend that.
Okay, all five will be attending. On Friday, again, April first, six thirty P M, over at Gerstel Academy is the Battle of the Books, where Commissioner Frazier will be attending, hosting, facilitating, I don't know what.
Just attending, as far as I know.
You don't dress up as Cat in a Hat or anything?
No. I'll be a Commissioner.
Okay.
Okay, on Saturday, April second, Christian Farmers Outreach Spring Luncheon over at Pleasant Valley Fire Hall, Commissioner Boucher.
Put my knee down on there.
Commissioner Frazier.
I'll probably be there, but I won't be in the capacity of a Commissioner, but you can add me to it just to make sure.
And Commissioner Wance.
Because I'll be.
I got three, going for four, going for four. I got three.
I'll be assisting in serving that as a volunteer.
I will definitely not be attending.
I'm not gonna be there with my political hat on that day.
That is the nicest fire hall in the county, I wouldn't say.
I wouldn't say that.
I don't know, I really enjoyed it.
They're all nice. The refurbishment was well done, but they're all good.
I wouldn't.
It's much better looking now, let's put it that way.
Thank you. The Hall or Steve?
It's highly adequate.
The Person of the Year, Maryland Motor Truck Association over at the Antrim.
Yeah, so.
You're attending that.
Yeah, so, the, well, it came out of the blue. So the Person of the Year is actually from Carroll County this year, from the Maryland Motor Truck Association. It's a gentleman by the name of Ray Shipley, who owns Shipley Transport. Dick, I'm sure you know him. Ray has been a friend of mine for many, many years. As a matter of fact, for those that are familiar with the Westminster Municipal Band, Ray carried the national colors in the color guard for years. And that's how I really got to know Ray. So he and his wife reached out to me, and then consequently the Motor Truck Association reached out, and when I saw that they were having this big soiree at Antrim, I was gonna change whatever I needed to change because that's gonna be pretty nice. So I'm gonna go, I've got a proclamation from all of us honoring Ray, and I'm gonna speak about everything that he's done in our community, not just about his business. And I'm honored to be a part of that that night, so that's where this came from.
That's awesome.
I think they're out of Annapolis, maybe, Maryland Motor Truck, I'm not sure, I believe they are, or Baltimore, perhaps?
Lobbying, more of a group, and they deal with motor truck.
Right.
In the state of Maryland, they honor a trucking company every year.
I'm glad they do because they're called the Maryland Motor Truck, so I'm glad that's what they do.
Not the Delaware.
I'm just saying. That's awesome.
You done yet?
No. Sunday, I will be giving the podcast.
Really?
Now, I need, as you should be, I need a motion to go into closed.
For land acquisition.
For land acquisition.
Giddy with excitement.
You should be giddy.
I make the motion to go into close for land acquisition?
Second.
I got a motion, a second to go into close for land acquisition, all in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to adjourn after our closed session.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to adjourn after our closed session, all in favor?
Aye.
Now.
Four, one.